Meeting of the Waco City Council on August 2nd. Oh, strike that. We will reconvene the August 2nd, 2022, 2:00 p.m. meeting to order at 3:02 p.m. There being no further business. We will adjourn the 2:00 o'clock meeting at 3:02 p.m. And now we will call the meeting of the Waco City Council on August 2nd, 2022, to order at 3:02 p.m. Please join me for a moment of silence and also bear, keep in mind the family of Classy Blue who passed away this past week. Thank you. We provide an opportunity for the public to address the city council on any agenda item or during the hearing of visitors section of the agenda on items other than public hearings. Speakers will be allotted one three-minute presentation regardless of the number of agenda items the speaker wishes to address. If you're here to speak and do not fill out a registration card, please see the city secretary's desk outside of the auditorium to provide registration information so that staff can contact you if necessary. If you have handouts, please let us know at the beginning of your presentation and staff will distribute those to council. If you're unable to approach the podium due to physical limitations, a microphone is available to be brought to you. Is there anyone present who would like to speak on a work session item? If not, then we will recess the regular session and convene to work session with a report from our city manager.
Counsel and to the public, have no changes to the agenda today, fortunately. Not bad, right, Jennifer? I do have an organizational update, though, and would like, Jody, where are you? I'm scanning the audience. Yeah, okay, we have our new director of development for the Texas Ranger Hall of Fame is with us today, Dr. Jody Ginn. Would you stand, Jody? Thank you. Jody, actually, it's his second day with the city. So his first day, he peaked on the first day and now he's with us. But we're real excited to have him with us over the next few years as he really works to build programs and capital funding opportunities at the Ranger Hall of Fame and Museum as we look to have an expansion project there. As the council is well aware, we funded a study over the last couple of years to think about the expansion. And Jody's background, I think it's important for you to know, is he's a former law enforcement investigator and administrator. He's also a U.S. Army veteran who's worked in the museum filmmaking and education industry and is also an adjunct professor of history for the last 20 years. So if you don't mind, let's welcome Jody to the city of Waco team.
Welcome aboard.
Welcome aboard. Our second highlight I wanted to provide is, you're actually seeing it up on the screen now, which is good, is an overview of the We Are Waco campaign. I think you've got some swag around the dais as well from that campaign, but it's something our marketing and communications team has been working hard on to really create an exciting campaign telling the stories of Wacoans, who we are. And that's where you come up with the idea of hashtag We Are Waco. And the concept is it's an exciting campaign that's very diverse and inclusive and really provides fresh content of local residents, businesses, and programs. So what I'd say is they've already got quite a bit of features lined up. They've already done some shoots with local business owners and local residents and more content's also underway, but I wanted you to watch kind of a 30-second preview of what the We Are Waco campaign's all about. spirit. We're going to show that through storytelling of our local residents and businesses. I'm excited to see those pieces start rolling out and excited to see them on all your social media pages in the future, too. Hint, hint.
To our comms team, thank you so much for your dedicated work to our city. It's so important to disseminate so many, so much good, crucial, sometimes vital, information, but this is the fun stuff. It's fun to really get to embrace and tell people both locally and around the country what a great space Waco is and what our culture is. So really excited about where this can go and much thanks to you guys.
Thanks, Mayor, for those comments. On agenda review, we do not have any informal reports today, and I'm going to highlight just a couple of resolutions. The first one being Resolution 511 deals with a tax increment financing agreement for up to $2.317 million with Rad Waco LLC. And there, yeah, thanks for the images, guys. It's perfect. This is a property that is downtown that you might have driven by before. It's a container development that's currently very brightly colored. And we're going to provide an update and talk about this agreement for a few minutes because I know there's been some community conversation about the council reconsidering this Rad Lab agreement. And a couple of things I wanted to start with is, you know, we, this is a new developer, new developer to the site, Rad Lab is, but the prior developer, I think it's important that the community knows, we never authorized any payments to the prior developer of the containerie. In fact, we ended up issuing a termination letter to the developer in February of 2021 due to timing considerations, and we never issued a certificate of occupancy on that structure either. So the previously awarded TIF dollars never left the city's administrative control and we actually deobligated those dollars after I issued the termination letter in 2021 until the Rad Lab team came to town with an idea of how to bring this project back to life. Rad Lab's team is proposing an extensive renovation and revisioning of the property as you're seeing on the slides, all the way from the color of the containers to the architectural style of the development. They also are increasing substantially the private investment into the project from the previous $2.6 million when it was the containerie to $12 million now planned by the Rad Lab team. It's quite an extensive change. And more importantly, from my vantage point, is that the team is taking what could have been a long-term blight on downtown, if it sat there in its current condition, and making it into a really contributing venue and place of commerce. The TIF agreement that's on your agenda today is a long-term reimbursement agreement, which means we will not fully reimburse the developer for their costs for actually a number of years. Their last payment from us will not occur until six years after the project is actually completed, which we anticipate will happen before August of 2023. So that means the developer will be holding those costs for those, for that $2.3 million of reimbursements for quite a while. This enables us to, you know, allows the TIF to leverage support for new projects within the TIF. It doesn't take up all that cash right away, meaning that, you know, we can continue to bring innovative and exciting things to the TIF board in the future. I really wanted to say thanks to Assistant City Manager Lisa Blackman for bringing the team from Rad Lab from California into Waco and pitching this opportunity. I think that's the kind of strategic work this council expects from our staff and very much appreciate her work as well as Kent George, our Economic Development Director, for seeing this through and never can leave out our city attorney and the creative and quick work that it takes to bring these deals forward. So I'll take any questions from the council on this item if you have any.
Holmes, I don't really have any questions. I think on this project, really, the lead, I think, needs to be the $12 million investment because that will help our tax base and the TIF, the TIF fund on an annual basis as this gets built. And I did have some questions on the 2.4 as it was detailed out, but I assume most of it's for, again, public facing sort of improvements and repairs to the existing, to the existing state of the project. And I'll get that detail from you. So, and the other part, I guess, I wanted to mention was that reimbursement over a long period of time, which I think is the best way to do this one. So the $12 million investment, I think, is the shining star in this story. So appreciate the work of the staff.
Bradley, you beat me to the punch to be able to thank Lisa. I think that is exactly the, you know, cool part about our city staff is that they are proactive to go find, okay, who's the best developer around the country to do container projects or container-type projects. And I've been able to do a little research on this organization and they have delivered beautiful, successful, vibrant, and activated projects in other communities around the country using containeries as part of the development and believe that they are going to be able to develop a really interesting and interactive space to downtown that is also beautiful and well-constructed. And so I think that this is going to be a valuable investment. I appreciate City Manager Ford highlighting the fact that we didn't issue any public dollars or incentive dollars to the previous developer, but we have some containers in downtown and we have an opportunity to fix and improve upon this development so that it really lives up to the standard that we have for our downtown, which is Sterling. And I think that we'll be able to accomplish that through this project.
Way to go, Lisa.
Counsel, one correction, it's not six payments, it's seven. It's even longer than what I thought. Two other highlights I'll make briefly. Resolution 524, competitive sealed proposal procedure for ALPR and gunshot detection system vendors. Wanted to highlight this one, and it's okay, guys, if it's not on the screen. Oh, I'm going out of order. Look at them. We've got a different crew in the back and they realize what it's really like trying to help the city manager. Thank you, guys. Wanted to highlight this. Yeah, Chief's in the room. Hey, Chief, Victorian. Earlier this summer, Chief Victorian created a violent crime response plan. It's posted on our website if any residents that are watching haven't looked at it, and I thought it was a very thoughtful approach to crime issues in Waco. And one of the issues that she brings into that plan was to pursue methods to bring down gun violence and gunshot detection in particular and how that could result in having a safer community. And so this item that's in front of the council tonight is authorizing us to move forward in seeking out vendors that could bring that sort of technology into Waco. The next step would be for us to receive proposals, evaluate them, and ultimately bring them back for the council's consideration at a future meeting. I'm definitely fully supportive of Chief's approach here, and as you'll note in the budget later on, I have included some one-time expense dollars in next year's budget to support it with the expectation it would be implemented at some point in 2023.
Thank you for highlighting that, City Manager Ford, and Chief Victorian for your insight. I was recently with the summer conference for National League of Cities and there was an entire day dedicated to the uptick of violent crimes, and it was a session for mayors alone, so I didn't get to sit in, but I did get the notes. And items like this, resources like this, are what are helping decrease violent crime. I first heard about a particular one that was used in your former city in Houston and, you know, now that there are others that are maybe not as expensive as that one, there are other opportunities for us to continue to do that kind of forward-thinking work that could bring these crime levels down. I know that, I know that our June numbers are down some, and I'm really pleased to see that, but I know that this was a celebrated effort by all parties involved, from city management to chief to community outreach, to all the things. But I'm, in order for us to make sure that our city and citizens are safe, you know, as many, as many tools in the toolbox is a plus for me. So I'm looking forward to moving forward with this.
I agree with my colleague. I think this is something innovative and something forward-thinking for our police department and for the citizens of Waco to know that if somebody shoots around their neighborhood, they're going to find out who was there and what happened and all that. I have been called to several homes where their homes were, yeah, I was trying to find a nicer word, but.
There's no nice word to say.
Nice word, shot up.
There's no nice word.
And I would go and they showed me the bullet holes and all that, but nobody, nobody in the neighborhood knew anything or saw anything or would commit to anything. So I think this is going to help us in the long run and, and anything that'll help our police department to get to the bottom of issues, crime issues, I think is great. So thank you, Bradley, for presenting this. Thank you, Chief Victorian, for bringing this forward to us and the forward-thinking. Thank you all.
Yeah, I think that this, we're so committed to making sure that Waco is free of violence and doing all that we can from several different angles to create that type of city. And I think that technology that is going to allow our officers to act quickly and promptly and efficiently to respond to violent acts is exactly the type of steps that we want to take to create that city that's free of violence. So thank you, Chief, for all that you do and look forward to seeing this one, the impact of this in a positive way for our community.
Thanks for those comments, counsel. We're glad to, glad to support you all in that venture. The last highlight I have is for, I'll never pass up an opportunity to talk about the animal shelter. We have two items on the agenda. We just have an outstanding team at the shelter. So wanted to take a moment to brag on our staff, really, and sort of relate it to the items because that's important. But at any given time, you know, our staff, our city staff takes care of a couple of hundred animals over at the animal shelter. And we do that in conjunction with our partner, the Humane Society of Central Texas, who serves as the adoption organization at the shelter. I just, it's in the item, but I want to highlight just the great results that we've seen, the great turnaround over the last seven years at that facility. People don't recall, it wasn't that long ago, and apologize for my crudeness, but it wasn't that long ago, seven years ago, where a dog entering that shelter had only a 45% chance of leaving alive. And this council and the councils that preceded it and the administration weren't comfortable with that. And today, we're very proud of a 90% live exit rate that we've seen over the last two years, and that trend does continue this year as well despite being a sustained high occupancy at the shelter. We have a lot of animals right now. So I submit my recommendation for these two resolutions and ask the folks listening to always adopt, don't shop. We need your help to get these animals out. And then finally, wanted to give a shout out to our shelter director, Trey. Do you mind standing up and giving a wave? He's real shy, so he probably don't want to. That's Trey Busby back there. Does a heck of a job leading our animal shelter team, and their tireless advocacy really creates a lot of positive outcomes for our community.
Bradley, may I say something on the Majestic Services, Inc. It says minority woman-owned. It says yes. All right. I like that.
I like the sound of that, too. Mayor, with that, that concludes the manager's report.
All right. The consent agenda consists of resolutions to 2022, 508 through 532. Are there any items that council would like to be pulled from the consent agenda? If not, the consent agenda will be as just read, and I'll turn it over to Bradley for our first work session.
We've got two doozies of work sessions for you, but first, we're going to start with the Riverfront team. Why don't you all make your way up while I'm making an introduction? Council, the staff, and a number of third parties have been really diligently working to bring this update to you on activities near the riverfront. Everyone's been working at really breakneck speeds to build what I think will end up being one of the premier mixed-use entertainment districts in all of Texas. That project includes, of course, the Foster Pavilion, the $215 million basketball facility, additionally about $175 million in private investment in multiple phases, and a significant investment by the city of Waco through its tax increment financing district, all working to transform this site into a really vibrant mix of open space, restaurants, retail, and urban living. Today's discussion, I'm going to turn it over to Tom Balk here in a moment. It'll start with a briefing on the rebuild of the 1970s, 1980s-era Riverwalk. That work is, of course, supported by Tom and the Parks Team, and I see a number of the Parks Team back in the back. Thank you all for your help in this, too, as well as an outside consultant that's really creatively planning the space. I think you're going to be really pleased with the drawings you see today. And the second portion will be led by Paris Rutherford of Catalyst Urban. He'll join the table here in a moment, showing us the exciting things to come with the restaurant spaces and urban living as well. On both presentations, a picture's worth a thousand words, so I'm going to let loose of the mic and let Tom kick us off.
Thank you, City Manager Ford. Again, my name is Tom Balk. I am with the Parks Department, and we've got a big group up here with us today. And so first off, I'd love to introduce the team presenting the Riverwalk redevelopment, head by Eric Johnston, Senior Associate with AECOM. He's the prime consultant for both the Riverwalk as well as the adjacent Foster Pavilion. His team of staff and outside consultants include specialists from Walker Partners and OJB. Andrew Elbers is the principal at OJB, and he's our project lead for the team that has prepared the vision for today's Riverwalk schematic design, and he'll be our primary presenter for today. The second presentation will come right after, and so we'll have an opportunity for questions in the middle, and then we'll bring up the Catalyst team. And before we get underway, I wanted to mention that while the Riverwalk presentation focuses on the proposed vision for the future of this key corridor, it's worth noting a lot of important attention given to context. So we're going to slip over to this slide. The team has pushed hard to capture not only the lessons learned from the existing conditions, but to also take on the mantle as the unifying element connecting so many of council's unprecedented investments right in this area. The opportunity for the Riverwalk to tie this package of investments together and serve our community while also making a huge impact on visitor impressions is so present, and to not do it right would absolutely take away from the sum total of all these important efforts. And so we're committed to that standard of digging deep and setting the bar high, and we've done our homework to achieve that. And I do want to mention Charles Leest. He is the deputy director, of course, of utilities. He has done an absolutely instrumental job in helping orchestrate so much of the overlapping work in this area, so big thanks to him. And then he's been a key part of our research process and working with other project partners. But as far as existing conditions, you may recall, prior council presentation in 2019, talked about the limitations and deterioration of this oldest stretch of Riverwalk from the 70s and 80s. Key concerns noted were crumbling features, repeated flooding, closures, and the need for better visibility, lighting, and safety. So this project team has dedicated itself to understanding this context, reaching out to collaborate with staff and adjacent project teams, and to preparing an exciting new vision that will draw the community in to energize and enjoy this new hub of activity on our beautiful Brazos River. And with that, I'd love to turn it over to Andrew at this time.
Thank you, Tom. So just to begin, we wanted to touch base on the, on the purpose of this presentation, really to give you an update on the design process, the scope that we've outlined, and some updates on the budget. Really, we would also love to get council feedback, confirmation of design direction, confirmation of the budget, and also get input on further areas of further design study. And our approach, our approach, as Tom has mentioned, is looking at this oldest portion of the Riverwalk and its sort of deteriorated state and looking to activate that and have it become a vibrant part of, a vibrant public destination for the city of Waco. Key to that is maximizing the benefits, as Tom noted, capitalizing on all the development opportunities in the area and integrating with the, this ongoing development. Key to our vision is connecting people to the water and doing so in such a way that the Riverwalk becomes less vulnerable to the regular flooding that we see on the Brazos, making it so that you can enjoy it year-round without sort of having to not enjoy it when it's flooded. And then also, there's the opportunity of using this new Riverwalk development to be able to tell stories of the city of Waco and the people who have made this such a wonderful place. So looking at storytelling opportunities and integrating that into the planning and design of the, of the Riverwalk. So this plan here is, is an overview plan. You can see highlighted is the area of study, and in bold are the improvements and ongoing developments that we're trying to leverage. So from the Foster Pavilion, the Brazos Riverfront development, the hotel and parking garage, the improvements at I-35, the master plan, the expansion of the Texas Ranger Hall of Fame, and then a future development site at University Parks and Franklin Avenue. And looking at all those opportunities and then dividing the, for the purposes of the study, dividing it into kind of three areas that we will zoom into. The primary coordination area around the Foster Pavilion and the new development, the downstream planning area that links the Texas Ranger Hall of Fame and the Baylor campus, and upstream that links to that future development site at Franklin and University Parks. Zooming in, our primary study area, our primary coordination area, we're looking at ways of connecting the Riverwalk to that development by making linkages at an overlook at Webster Avenue, working with Catalyst Development at integrating the way that Clay Avenue and the Lake Brazos Park and the restaurant site all integrate into the Riverwalk, looking for opportunities of art, how it moves and connects, or connects around the Foster Pavilion, and then really looking hard at the linkage underneath I-35 and connecting to that downstream area. Downstream, again, we're coming underneath I-35 and then connecting into that higher Riverwalk elevation, keeping it out of the floodplain, and then looking for opportunities for program areas that would activate this segment of the Riverwalk and then also providing opportunities for parking so that as you come and visit the Riverwalk, there's more opportunities to get there and enjoy the experience. And then also a potential connection to the, to the Baylor Law School parking lot and that portion of the site. Upstream from the primary coordination area, the major concern was taking from the existing Riverwalk elevation, getting up to the elevation above the floodplain, making a connection to that future Mary Avenue Bridge, but also using this opportunity to link the Riverwalk back to Mary Avenue, making a connection underneath the active railway, and then linking again to Webster Avenue. Zooming here, zooming in here at the Marina, which is kind of the heart of the primary consideration area, at the end of Clay Avenue, really looking at the way of transforming the park and Clay Avenue into a pedestrian-friendly experience, linking to the development, linking to Foster Pavilion, activating the restaurant site, and then coming to a plaza there at the corner, or at the Marina, where there will be a water feature that then from that you can circulate down, also offering the opportunity to have a bridge that makes the connection through that Marina area, giving the opportunity to look back at the Foster Pavilion, back at that water feature, and giving you a different experience along, along the Riverwalk. As you move upstream from that plaza where the water feature is, you actually come down in elevation and then you come back up at Webster Avenue. This undulation of the path allows for opportunities for the restaurant development to create different outdoor spaces and integrate in with the Riverwalk to offer people different opportunities. And you come up and again to the Webster Avenue overlook, when we have some renderings and views of that, that activates the end of Webster Avenue and again offers another portal for people to get in and use the Riverwalk. So some of the existing experience with the Riverwalk is the gray change and sort of, you know, do I really want to commit to going down all those stairs? This offers you the opportunity to really get into the Riverwalk system without having to make that decision. And then these are some views looking back at, at the Riverwalk. So this is a view looking back at the Marina. You can see the large water element activating. You can see the large water element activating that plaza, the elevated walkway that gives you that experience of being out over the water and in the Marina, and then the pathway that leads up and around, connecting back to Clay Avenue. And then also thinking about how the Riverwalk will be experienced both in day and night, knowing that having great lighting will allow this to have a lifetime well beyond dark and make it feel safe and enjoyable all day long. Also thinking about how if you are out on the water, looking back and adding another experience or another dynamic nature to the whole development. So thinking about it both from the user experience on land, but also the user experience from the water. And then this is coming around the restaurant development, looking at Foster Pavilion, and how you have the opportunities of multiple pathways, either taking you out over the water or leading you back up to Clay Avenue in a gentle, accessible pathway. At the termination of Webster Avenue, using that as an opportunity to create another outdoor space that projects out over the water, a shade structure would allow that to be used, you know, even the sunniest day, getting you out into the river so you can catch a breeze and look down the river, and just another great opportunity to experience the Brazos. This is a view looking at that shade structure and what that experience might be like, the overlook there, and then an elevated rest space that maybe you could see being programmed with buskers or, you know, some other sort of programming there. Upstream from the Webster Avenue overlook, the pathway continues, and we would integrate a structure to allow us to move underneath that active railroad bridge at the 384 elevation, linking to the upstream development. And then south of the Marina, or downstream of the Marina, looking at the water wall here. And the idea with this space is that as you move under I-35, we want to make that a signature experience. It's not just a space that you would transition through. So the idea of creating a feature where we would be able to circulate water from the Brazos and run it down this water wall, that becomes something to talk about, perhaps a destination within itself, and then activating that with light at nighttime to provide another signature element. This plan, looking across the entire development, really is looking at highlighting where we've looked at for opportunities for art to be integrated into the design, opportunities for historic or storytelling opportunities, looking for opportunities to create spaces that are beyond just a plaque or some sort of monument that says, but tells the story of a place, but actually creating a space that tells that story as well. And then all along the entirety of this length of Riverwalk, opportunities to have programmable spaces. So opportunities for the city to host events or have otherwise programmed spaces.
So I want to talk about the budget, and then we'll get into schedule a little bit. But as we designed this thing in three different phases, we also priced it in three different phases. Primary coordination area is phase number one, right in the middle, with the impetus being around the Marina. That's at 18.8, and then downstream, that base is at 6.3. So again, we want to reiterate that these are soft costs, or that they do not include soft costs, excuse me, they're just construction costs, but they do include a construction contingency, design contingency, as well as escalation if we bid this thing out in the next year. And then as far as the schedule, we're getting ready to wrap up schematic design at the end of this month, go right into design development. While we're doing that, concurrently, we'll have the approvals for FEMA. The Corps of Engineers will prepare that submission, go forward with those approvals, and concurrently, at the back end of the approvals, we'll do construction documents. At the end of that, near the beginning of year 2024, the design team will submit for permitting to the city of Waco, and then concurrently, we'll go out to bid either with a CM or a GC. And then construction starts at the early part of 2024, lasts approximately 24, 20 months. Any questions?
Any questions on this portion of the presentation, comments?
Holmes over here, I was just looking at that last Gantt chart, and the one versus January 2024, Baylor occupies Foster Pavilion, is that, are we moving quickly enough to facilitate? This whole thing won't be operational when the basketball deal is open, right? Or are we going to be kind of in the middle of it? I was just getting that right in my mind.
That's correct. So they will open before construction has begun in earnest on the Riverwalk. What we have been focusing on in the coordination process is to make sure all the design assumptions and the coordination on critical elevations and tie-ins is established so that they have everything they need to not be impeded by future design conversations with the Riverwalk. So while the construction phases will be asynchronous, at least the design coordination has taken place to allow them to proceed at full speed. And we've worked out staging and construction access scenarios that will allow us to mobilize into the necessary construction footprint without disrupting the ongoing use of the Pavilion and the riverfront development. So that will be one of the impacts on the cost, and that was one of the other benefits that we wanted to highlight as part of our budget conversation, is just to say that we have definitely layered in additional attention in this team and in this process to make sure that we're reaping the full benefit of, you know, in-depth analysis of all these kind of questions such as mobilization, but also taking careful stock of the market and comparable projects to propose a budget that we feel very confident in, so.
Thomas, what you're saying is we can't go center because we'll get in Baylor's way?
That's part of it, but also the permitting part of it. Because we're the ones touching the water, we've got additional permit coordination with FEMA and the Army Corps of Engineers. So that timeframe, it may not take the entire bubble represented there under approvals, but historically, prior to the development boom that we've seen, and not just in Waco, but historically, six months was a pretty good turnaround for the Army Corps of Engineers on that kind of permitting. That has definitely expanded longer and longer. So we've got to leave an allowance for that in our process, and we don't want to have a surprise and be in the way of any other of our adjacent developments.
I think we're all thinking the same question. Is that not, I mean, this far out, knowing the timeline, is that not something that we can have a conversation with our federal leadership about, especially with the conversations that we've had in the past with Corps of Engineers on how important this timing is? I know government moves at the speed of trust, and so, but I think it's an ask that we would be remiss to not make.
Absolutely, Councilmember. I think that's a wise ask, and if they say no, then we're sitting here, and if they say yes, we'll be able to modify accordingly. One of the key differentials between the Baylor work, the Foster Pavilion work, and our work is, you know, Baylor doesn't have to walk this road because of how the Pavilion is situated, and that's why they can even entertain the idea of being open in January 2024. Otherwise, they'd be much more along the lines of our timeline.
I understand.
Yeah, but we'll certainly make the ask of all of our federal partners, and certainly good to have friends around the table that might care similarly about this issue as we do.
I'll just add to my comments on this. The vision is fantastic and beautiful and transformative. And when I first moved to Waco, it's a long time ago, came to law school in 1980, everybody said, you know, Waco's such a good place, the location between Austin and Dallas, and it's got a river. And it just seems like the time that I've been here, we've not really taken advantage of this Riverwalk element. And there is a Riverwalk there, but this is more than a Riverwalk. I mean, this is, again, transformative, beautiful, something that we can all be very proud of. And the comment back then was that somebody should do something, that somebody should do somebody, I don't know who somebody was. So it takes, you know, big steps that we're taking as a staff and council, and residents and citizens of Waco, all of us are together on this, because this is not a small project. Like, it's not once in a lifetime, this is once in a hundred years or more. So I'm very excited about getting this thing tracked and excited about the timelines that we're putting out there. Just a couple other, I like the fact that we're kind of redoing this trail with, you know, water walls and the undulation there and the portals coming in and out, grade changes and the lighting, because it seems like the lighting has always been sort of sketchy that we have now. So the extra thought that we're putting into this project, I think, is worthwhile in the long run. And also the connectivity that we get with Baylor and downtown, we always said, getting that part of it right, I think, is important, not only on the Riverwalk here, but I think we'll talk about it later, under I-35, as that, making that a bright and inviting and memorable kind of a crossover there under I-35 as the Riverwalk goes under there. Let me see, what else did I want to say? Oh, the part that, where we really connected in this, in a recent council meeting, on the history and the storytelling, and Alicia brought up the point about Sandtown, and I hadn't really made that connection until, you know, the last six or eight months, and we've been talking about it. So I think that you're highlighting that in one of the slides here, which I think Alice told me that she's in one of those pictures on the, in the slide on that one deal at the Michelista Hall. But anyway, I think getting that connection to the history of Waco and making it real and making it just a neat place for people to be proud of in the newness, and also to honor the history that has been there. I like the fact that we're focusing on that. So, I mean, I can't think of anything bad to say about this. You guys, this looks good. This looks great. I think, again, all citizens of Waco have wondered about something like this happening, and it's happening. So let's keep up, keep our nose to the grindstone, and keep this thing going, and make sure we get this done. But I appreciate it.
Thank you for those comments, Ime. You know, Sandtown was, and all the way up to almost La Salle to Jefferson, was a huge Hispanic community. I remember it as a, telling my age here, but as a young girl, little girl, my parents and I would walk that area. My aunts lived in East Waco, so we would walk down to the bridge from First Street where we lived to get across to go to East Waco. But that was a huge vibrant community that was broken up by urban renewal, and from urban renewal, we all scattered all over the city of Waco. A.J. Moore was a beautiful place for us to go and enjoy also their grounds, and at one point in time, I was trying to think, and I couldn't remember, A.J. Moore had a big, beautiful band that was known all over this country for their music accomplishments. And I remember going and watching them in the parades downtown and then listening to them practice, because we lived across the street from A.J. Moore. And the Michelistas, that was the organization that kept us all together. They were right there on North Second. So I thank the staff for putting these pictures in here and bringing issues forward and remembering that there was a part of Waco, citizens of Waco, that grew up in that area, that have worked hard and made Waco the city that it is now. And so I'm proud that, and emotional that you guys are remembering us, because nobody else has. So thank you for that. And I know all the families that lived in Sandtown, there were so many, I was sitting here just trying to think of all the families. There's so many that live there, and businesses that were there that are no longer there because of urban renewal, and everybody had to go their way. I don't remember much of how that happened, I just remember we were on First Street, then the next day, we moved to South 14th, and I don't know how that happened. I know my parents probably did, but thank you all for remembering us, thank you for this, and I know the citizens that lived in that area, and A.J. Moore as well, will be so grateful that we were remembered, that we are being remembered in this way. So I thank you all.
History that's not preserved is lost. And so as we develop and as we grow and build into this city that we are destined to be, we cannot forget how we got there. So the innovative creativity of the new parts is awesome. I mean, we're all here for that, and I mean, and it's a long time coming. My mother said on this dais and said, "We will be as strong as our river," because that is the one thing that, you know, San Antonio had to build in order to create, and we have it right here in our backyard. But with that innovation coupled with this commitment to our heritage, this commitment to our history, this commitment to our foundation, is what's going to make this. It is transformational, it is generational. These are the things that, who we are, that's the part, bringing all of it together. So I'm excited.
I love so much about this. I love that this is leveraging TIF funds for public good. One of my favorite things about Waco is being in outdoor spaces, whether it's being in Cameron Park or walking along the river and seeing the intersection of our community. I think so often in cities like ours, we can exist in silos, and our public spaces bring together neighbors from across ages and races and backgrounds and lived experiences and create this sense of fabric and that we're knit in alongside one another. So I think that's so powerful, that we are creating places for people to exercise and play and gather and listen to live music and appreciate the art that is in our community. I also agree with the women on council in terms of just how important this narrative piece is. In the DEI work that we're committing to doing, it's so crucial that we're working on diversity, equity, and inclusion from a past, present, and future orientation. And in DEI work, we talk a lot about the power of counter storytelling and highlighting narratives that have been either lost to history unintentionally or intentionally, and for us to capture the stories of Sandtown and to have people like Alice that can speak to the people that were there and the institutions, while those voices are still at the table, I think is incredibly powerful and is demonstrating that this commitment is so serious. And when we pull, when we say that we're committed to equity, that is pulled through every element of the work that our city is doing. So this is exciting, these renderings are stunning. Part of me wonders, I asked in my agenda review today, like, when is this all going to be done? Like, I recognize this is a massive undertaking. Do we think maybe like 2040 that we could see all three of these done? You don't have to obviously sign this in blood, but would be curious, best case scenario, when do we see each of these three phases complete?
What I will say is that the phasing, in particular, why we haven't bitten off that third phase yet on the formal calendar is because we do need to bake in a little bit of time for the future of that future development site to start to become more defined. So just like we're working closely with the associated developments adjacent to the, like the Foster Pavilion and the riverfront, we want to have that strong tie-in with that future development as well. So allowing that to trail just a little bit, we do look forward to bringing back a firmer schedule on that subject in the future.
Awesome, thank you.
I like the phrase, "It's a long time coming." It's, I think, you know, so many people have said, just pause for a second and say, you know, how cool is it that we're proceeding on action on this very thing that we've talked about for so long? So it's a really monumental day in Waco to get to move forward on this dream that this community has had for so long. Thank you to our team and our staff. I see Paul stood at the table the same week that Budget's filed, he's working on this too. I know that there's been so much stuff going on, and I just want to express my sincere thanks for everybody on our team, both in-house and out-of-house, for their hard work on this. This is really exciting, and I'm really, really very excited about This is really exciting and I'm really, really very excited about this. A couple of comments I had is, I noticed the kayak kind of docker that was there. I think one thing to consider as we're moving forward is if there are people with some sort of, that are on other types of boats, like a motorboat or something like that. I know in, I'm thinking of like Lake Austin where there's restaurants and activity, people are boating up and docking. And so, I don't know if that's something that we want to bear in mind or, and those are docks that kind of jut out into the waterway a little bit. So, obviously, just an idea out there, but want to preserve as many, we've always been multimodal in terms of our downtown land transportation and now we can do that on our water transportation as well. But I love the idea of kayakers and paddleboarders being able to paddle right up to this space, but want to think about the jet skiers and the motorboats that might want to come up as well and make sure that we have ample space for them, if that's something that's tenable. I love the vegetation, but one thing that, kind of with that kind of design and storytelling in mind, you know, just, I would be remiss or couldn't help, I can't help but say, I was kayaking on the Brazos the other day and there's all this beautiful natural Brazos River vegetation on there. I don't know what goes in here, but I want it to be connected to Waco. So, as we're doing our landscape architecture, be thoughtful about the beautiful kind of Brazos River, that Brazos River field that comes in here. And even same thing with the water features, you know, the Texas Hill Country has a set of water features that matches its geography. And we had a history of springs here in Waco. And I'm, it's important to me that everything from natural elements to actual architecture that we're designing it in a way that honors our history, as has been mentioned, our legacy historically here, architecturally, and in our landscape design as well. I think, you know, what I'm hearing from council is a desire to try to look at that timeline and make sure that this is as fast as we can run. I know that this team is doing that, so I'm not questioning your desire, I know everyone at this table and I at the table want to move as quick as possible. But I'm hearing from this, what I'm hearing from us today is really whether or not there's an opportunity to reexamine this, to see if we can run a little faster. I do think it is, it is hard to hear that construction will start, you know, nearly two years from now and that it'll wrap up nearly two years after the pavilion's open. I understand the difficulty around that, but I definitely appreciate council saying, you know, what can we do to help? Who can we call at the Corps of Engineers to move this faster and really run? So, very much excited for this. Thank you to the team's work and look forward to seeing this project proceed.
Thanks, Council. I have one more thing before we let Tom leave the table, because we need to grill him a little more. So, y'all feel free to ask him more questions. Just at the end of this, or no, a couple of days ago, I think, actually, Tom received a promotion. And he's now our Assistant Director of Parks and Recreation. He just does a great job for us. I wanted to just kind of give a highlight of Tom. You know, Tom is a great leader in our organization and I'm just really proud of him for continuing to grow into all the, all the big shoes that exist over in parks and all the big projects that we continue to bring forward. And I know he's up to the task and he's got my full support. So, thank you all for acknowledging that.
Thank you, Bradley.
Great. We're so thankful for you, Tom. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council.
I appreciate that. I will hand it off real quickly here. We've got an exciting follow-up presentation from the Catalyst team. And Paul, if you wanted to say some remarks, I don't want to overstep.
Sure. As we're making the transition here, I want to thank council for your kind words in that last presentation. And I also wanted to compliment council and bring in AECom to the table. As you know, AECom is the design firm doing Foster Pavilion. And to bring them onto our team, super important here. And OJB, they brought in, I think you all see the good work that they've done. And they're really have focused on integrating this work, not only with Waco and the culture, but also with the private development that you're about to hear about now from the Catalyst team. So, thank you, Council, for that. And we're excited to hear from Catalyst. And we have with us Paris and Reese, who are the leads with Catalyst. You've met them before and they've been involved with this project for a long time, done a great job on the initial phases. We've got them involved in these future phases, so we're excited to see where they're taking the next phase and complimenting the good work that's being done by the university and making this a really special place. So, turn it over to Paris.
Thanks, Paul. Mayor and council members, nice to see you all again, especially an evening like this to follow up a presentation like we just saw is pretty exciting. So, we're very honored and happy to be your private partner in the evolution of the riverfront. And we have worked very hard over the last several months in the design process to make sure that the public team and the private teams are talking so that we have a riverfront that's thoroughly connected, that, because that's meaningful at the end of the day. If you, if you see something cool and you can't get to it, that's disappointing. So, we're working to make sure that does not occur. And we're also working to make sure that we are positioning the initial phase of buildings around the pavilion in such a way that it resonates as an extension of downtown to the riverfront. Hence the word "riverfront," as you see here. So, what we'd like to do tonight is quickly run through in the work session where we are on the design of what is our second phase. In our partnership with you all, this is an important moment for us, because we are looking for basically your comments and hopefully endorsement that you like the direction that we're headed in, so that we can continue moving forward in the schedule. Because it is, you know, we are looking still at starting construction in January and we're on an incredibly tight timeline to get that done. So, we're at the kind of end of our schematic design, design development phase. We have specifics here that we're going to show you and, you know, love to hear your commentary and see what your thoughts are as we move forward. Real quickly on the first phase, last time we were here, we talked about the kind of the process of where we were. We still are on that same process, will be finished up with everything in that first phase by the end of second quarter of next year, so all good there, despite all the things going on in the world that continues. So, it's nice to see that there are other folks out on site with big, big equipment doing things alongside us. So, it's just nice to see everything that's happening in that area. So, you'll recall the overall district plan. You see the buildings there, kind of right in the middle within the red line is what's currently under construction. We appreciate Paul's efforts with us and your, your design team to look at how the original conceived designs for the roads and such would evolve now that the pavilion's coming in, so that everything kind of works and matches with the other work that you're doing elsewhere in downtown. So, we have been actually evolving some of the public streetscape that we have as part of Phase One, and that is incorporated in what we're finishing right now with you as well. So, things are dynamic and they have been adapting to, you know, the current context that we're in. Who knew four or five years ago, and that would be in the position that we all are in today with the great things that you all are doing? So, I'm specifically here to talk about our next phase, the second phase, those buildings that are colored there in the middle. There's the two restaurant buildings up on the river, and then there's the mixed-use building and the garage for one of the parking resources for the pavilion there, right in the core. So, formally, this evening, you have an agenda item, your first read on the PD zoning. That's before you this evening as well. As part of that, elevations are associated with that. So, that'll be a part of your first read that you're seeing. But in addition to that, to make sure that we're going through our partnership with you all, we're also going through the design process with you as was envisioned in our agreements with you. And that's, that's another reason why we're here in the work session. Okay, so, we're going to talk about the mixed-use building first and then we'll talk about the restaurant buildings after that and love to get your thoughts afterwards. So, you recall in the beginning, these were slides that you saw a while back. This was kind of before we started design, other than the site plan of kind of what the conception was at that time for the building. And we're still pretty consistent with that in terms of the layout. We've got about 10,000 feet or so of retail and restaurants that are up on University Parks. It's gotten better since then. We've got residential uses that wrap around this parking garage. The parking garage is, at that time, was considered to be 365 spaces. We're still right in that range. Good portion of that is spaces that are open for the pavilion and other uses during game day and, you know, throughout the week when it's a non-game day. And what's, what's unique about this, this site is that this is kind of the Keystone Site. It's a transition site between the initial phase of buildings and the, kind of the modern building that's coming in with the pavilion. So, the architecture, our goal, was to make sure that everything blends together. It's eclectic, because there's different styles and things coming together, but all those buildings hold the street edge. And we wanted to make sure that the pavilion didn't look odd with traditional buildings all around it. So, we have a little bit of kind of modern flair, we have some traditional flair. The existing buildings under construction that were conceived before, we knew anything about Baylor's plans. We're kind of taking a cue from some of the historical buildings in downtown. So, you'll see we're blending all of that together in a way we think that helps root the hotel and the pavilion with the first phase, so that it all makes sense when you come into town. So, this is a shot looking northwest at Webster and Clay. So, the arena, the pavilion is to your right, off-screen, but this gives you a sense of the, this is the first corner someone's going to see as they come west on University Parks. And we have a good-sized building here, it's mixed-use. And this is a place where we're starting to set the tone for quality. So, these are all brick buildings. And we've got strong retail storefronts at the base. This would be a singular restaurant that you see here at the base. And then we're really trying to emphasize the verticality of the building, as you can see how we've taken those bay windows and made them two stories. Those are actually two units up above, but it looks like it's single, to emphasize the verticality of it. And then we have a lighting designer on this project to make sure that at night it looks equally as good. And then you see, as you move your way north on Clay, as you're going towards the river there on the right, that you see there's kind of a multitude of building forms that make their way down, like the rest of downtown, so that it's not a monolithic building. We didn't want, we wanted it to be in scale with the rest of downtown. And honestly, to allow the biggest building in the area, which is the pavilion, to read as the biggest building, as it should. So, we didn't want to compete with that, but we also didn't want to get absorbed entirely by it. So, we're making a mark to help you turn the corner here, and that's what this rendering is showing. You see the level of streetscape that's out in front with planting. The city's design team is going through that process right now. We've actually increased the dimension from the curb to the building out on University Parks, so there's ample area for outdoor dining. And all these things are important to us, because we know that the restaurants that we're going to be putting in here need to feel comfortable that they're not being outclassed by the restaurants that are out on the river. So, we need to make sure that they have nice offerings too. And that's, I'll be talking more about that in a minute. So, this is that elevation on University Parks. And the photos on the bottom kind of give you some detailed snippets of some of our intentions. But you can see that this also is comprised by different building forms. They communicate with each other, they have similar massing, but they're different enough so that it doesn't feel like a monolithic building. So, it's, again, emphasizing the verticality, like the rest of downtown does on your current streets. We've got great outdoor dining, we've got detailing in the windows, so we'll have shadow lines, so it's not just a flat facade, which is important to us. And how the retail storefront comes together, it's not just a flat aluminum storefront, like you sometimes see, that's really boring. This is not that. This is, has undulation and articulation to it, so that it's very unique in terms of how it's expressing itself. These are brick buildings. The one in the middle is a tile-clad building, to give it kind of an extra punch as a connector between the two brick buildings. On the far left there, you see, and you'll see a rendering in a moment, that's the northern or the southern entry into the garage. That garage there is clad in brick, and it has a metal, a metal screen feature above it. And I'll show you a picture in a couple of slides of kind of a precedent image of that. But, you know, really eye-catching to kind of draw your attention as you're going in and parking to go to all the great things that are happening in riverfront. So, this is a view looking towards that parking entry. What's to the left of the tree and that word promenade, that's actually the retail building that we're still under construction and finishing right now, and that's its outdoor dining area. To the right, you see the mixed-use building, and that will have ground-level restaurant, outdoor dining that comes all the way out to the sidewalk at University Parks. And then we have the brick building that goes up above that. You see that kind of shadow feature up there, up top, that's a screen, like a visual screen, that creates shadow lines along the building to make it look cool throughout the day. And then you're making your way up this small road that takes you into that garage and it'll have signage that says, you know, "Public Parking," and you kind of go in that way. But this, you know, this is, believe it or not, this is our back door. This is our service side of the building. So, we're, we did a rendering this to show you that there is no backside to this building. So, now we're up on Clay. We're right across from the hotel. And this, then that large passeo arch, this is the main way that people come in and out of the garage. I'm going to show you in the plan in a minute, as a pedestrian, that we didn't want to force people north and south, so they had to walk a long way around to get to the pavilion for the special events that are going on. So, we're actually allowing the public to walk right through the middle of the building at the ground level from the public resources. So, you actually have three ways that you can walk out of the garage, north into the park, south to U-Parks, and then east to the pavilion. That's, I just want to point that out, because that's atypical, to walk right through the middle of a private building like that, but we're doing that on purpose. It also is an entrance into a courtyard that's back behind this building. I'm going to show you that in the plan in a little bit. But what's very interesting, and we're just so excited about the concept for that courtyard, is that it'll give the restaurants in front the ability for their outdoor dining to spill into the courtyard as well. So, we'll have kind of a public feel. Then you can access that from the, this passageway as well, particularly on game day, if there's an event or something like that going on. You see in here kind of the richness of the forms. You see kind of that pattern in between the balconies on the right, those are tiles, that's a tile inset on the building to give some decoration to the building that's beyond what you, you know, traditionally find in architecture these days. So, it's very tactile, very pedestrian-oriented, and real focused on, you know, other kinds of experiences like that you, that you have in downtown right now as it is. So, again, this is the overall elevation for that portion of the building. You see the, kind of a precedent image for that archway entry into the courtyard. You see some of the tile insets and some articulation for the storefronts that I mentioned before. And this is now up at the corner of Clay and River Street, right at the southeast corner of the park, of the farmer's market. And this is a very important corner. We've got great views of the pavilion and of the river, but you can also see this building from, I think, from 35 and from the other side of the river. So, this will be prominent as well. So, kind of playing up on some of the other historical cues, but also in a modern way, it's called a piano noble, but it's the top floor of the building is a balcony structure that projects out. So, if you're in those spaces up there, you can come out, you can sit outside with your friends, and you can look down at what's happening in the farmer's market. And it's got a structure that goes with that, with the overhanging roof. And again, these are all masonry buildings. And we have another building to the right, right online and on center with the, with the farmer's market area that does the same thing. So, the hope is that, you know, we'll have people out there when events are going on and it's going to look very animated. These little insets on the upper right show you, we're exploring an idea about how to get planting up on those balconies right now as well, and that shows you what that option would look like. So, this is the elevation right in front of the park on the south side there at the farmer's market. And you see some of the precedent imagery that shows tile insets, it shows a strong cornice line for the building, cornice being the, how the building kind of ends and meets the sky, and a historical precedent for how that piano noble balcony structure is working in there. It's, it's important to note that the ground level of this building has private terraces that open straight onto the sidewalk, onto the public sidewalk. So, if you're a resident there, you can come out and enjoy all the goings-on, you can have plants and planting and flowers, et cetera. You can have plants and planting and flowers, et cetera, but you also have your private space. So you're, you're see and be seen, but you, you know, there's a gate there that opens and closes. It's at a small kind of three-foot height level. And then you see the entrance into the garage from the north side. So if you're at the park area, you can go into the garage from here as well. And you see that bottom-right photo, this isn't the exact design, but it gives you a sense of the kind of metal lattice work that we're envisioning there above the parking entry. And it gives, you can see how the garage itself is clad in brick. And then that center photo, the center photo shows you kind of a ground-level patio area and how we're working with some small walls to kind of articulate the sidewalk experience so it's not the same thing as you walk around the building. And then finally, at the ground level at that corner, the northeast corner, we've got bandings of brick to have a lot of texture so that this building feels rich and nice and, you know, comfortable and has a lot going on visually that you can appreciate as you walk around it. So quickly, because I think the plan is important, that arrow in blue, that's what I was mentioning before. So that shows a pedestrian path from the ground level of the garage to the sidewalk, and it goes through the building. So that area where the dash line goes through is open all the time. And when residents come for private functions, we'll have access-controlled entries in there, but the public is able to stroll through there to get to the parking. And you recall on the elevation and, and the renderings that there's that tall arch? Well, that's exactly where we're looking at here. So it, it'll be very tall, very well-lit. There'll be nice material in there, and it's really celebrating kind of the public ceremony of being able to park and then walk out to the sidewalk. That courtyard, which is just to the top of the red area, which is the retail, that's that zone where the restaurants in the middle, in the red, have the option to be able to have outdoor dining in the courtyard as well. So that's exciting for us because when you look at that building versus some of the other buildings, the other buildings have private courtyards. This is kind of a public courtyard, if you will. So it's, it gives, it gives you lots of different reasons to come here across the entire district is, is the thought here. So we're diversifying things in that regard. And then the other side just shows you, we've gone through a lot of detail as it relates to how the building itself is laid out as we're barreling towards construction drawings right now as we speak. From a landscape standpoint, this shows you some of the, the vision for that courtyard. In the middle of it, in gray, we're looking at a pavilion that will be there all the time, whether people are dining in it or not, whether it's, you know, residents that are coming down to hang out, or there's a, a wedding or, or some kind of event where people can move in and take advantage of that space. So you see kind of what the intention is there. Above that, to the left, is a, is a grilling terrace where people are able to look down into that courtyard. So let's say there is an event that's going on, you know, folks would be able to be up there and not be directly in the event, but they're up top and they can be grilling a steak or whatever they want to do. And, you know, it also acts as a, as a screen to the parking garage entry, so you don't have people driving by your event. So that's on the mixed-use. So I'll run through now the restaurants and then take your questions if that works. So, you know, the Riverfront restaurants are, is a remarkable opportunity. Someone said earlier kind of a once-in-a-hundred-year deal. Well, I'm not going to live to be a hundred, so it is a once-in-a-lifetime situation. It's, I can't really think of many other places in the country, first of all, but certainly in Texas, where you have the potential to be right adjacent to the water. There's not many places. There's just, there's probably less than three or four that I can think of in the state. And there are none that I can think of that are an expansion to downtown, that have a farmer's market on the other side of them, that have a basketball pavilion adjacent to it, that have a great university, you know, just right next to that. This is truly unique. So we thought that this is a crescendo moment. So even though this zone is kind of technically in a floodplain, as I mentioned to you the last time we were together, we're looking at those restaurants being elevated out of the floodplain to come out up so that when you're out in a large outdoor patio area, you can be right above the water and look down at the water and see the people walking on the great Riverwalk that you all just saw earlier, and that's right in front of you. But it was important to us that the, that we had a connection to the Riverwalk. And you'll see that here in a moment, how we've done that. So before, you know, we are still working with the same plan that we had talked to you about previously, but we've, we've kind of stepped up the game in terms of the materials and just the level of quality. This is truly unique in the state, and, you know, we're, we're taking that seriously. So this shows you what we're envisioning with two restaurants. We're basically in the middle of the river looking south. You can see the Riverwalk in front of you. You can see how the restaurants are up because they have to get out of the floodplain. But what's in between them is a shared green play area with a series of steps that go down to that play area. So we're envisioning that you could be there, you could be enjoying your dinner, your kids could be, you know, enjoying themselves down on the grass lawn down below. There could be music in that zone. You've got large outdoor dining terraces for both restaurants that look into that play area as well as enclosed air conditioning space, obviously. The restaurants have a similar architecture, but they're different. That's important. You know, restaurateurs like to kind of claim their flag, so we want to make sure that there's two clear flags that can be claimed, so it doesn't feel like they're in a complex. And then this is, you know, something that is really allowing people to look out at the life of the river and, and at the same time be seen from the highway or from the Riverwalk or from the pavilion or from the other side of the river on the improvements you've already put in place. This is now looking into the inlet kind of marina area, looking back from the pavilion side at what that looks like. You can see that building in the foreground has a very large outdoor open dining terrace that is looking back at both the farmer's market to its south as well as the pavilion. And then you start to get a sense of that play area in between them and the, and the terraces that go up to park level. And then the other restaurant, its outdoor area there in the distance, and you can see the glass that takes you into the inside zone just, just beyond that. Kind of another view, another angle. We're currently, for the western restaurant, we're currently looking at a second-level terrace. We're having discussions on the operations side about that presently to kind of explore, you know, how that would work as we think having a view up there would be pretty cool.
Is that what, that is over to the right?
Yeah, that's to the right, and that, that's on the west side. That building, because it's, it's further away from the pavilion, we wanted to give it something even, even different than, than the one that's close, you know, close to the pavilion. So that's the thought, is to have an, an upstairs terrace that you can go out there, hang out, and, and have used up and down the river. And then importantly, on, on the street that, it's called No Name Street right now because we're still working through with that name of it, but on the north side of the park, there is a street that runs east-west, and these buildings need to frame and edge there so that, you know, when you're in the park, they have an address and you can walk up to them. So as you'll see in a minute in the plan, we have a central drop-off area. The front doors for both restaurants are off that central drop-off area. And this is the back, this is kind of the service facade that you're looking at. And the reason why I stress that is we were very careful about materials and, you know, with stone materials and others that present a quality effect here, that we're not treating this as a service edge because we only have this area where we can have loading and, you know, access to, for, for the fire department and so forth and so on. So that's, that's what you're seeing here, but this edge will look nice as well. So from a landscape standpoint, you see some imagery. The concept is that that space in between the restaurants on the, on the kind of lower part of that drawing between the two buildings, that's at sidewalk level. So you can walk straight from the park out onto that. Anybody can do that. You can then walk down those steps and go down a ramp if you're in need from a handicap standpoint to then take that route out to the Riverwalk. So it's been coordinated so that if someone's in the park, they can walk straight between these two buildings, and then they can walk down and access the, the Riverwalk in that location if they so desire. They can also walk down the sidewalk to the right or the left and get on the Riverwalk at the higher elevation as well. See the facades in here, gives you some snippets of the materials. And because these are in direct view of the pavilion, you will see the pavilion and these buildings together. This is where these are more contemporary, to work with the pavilion's architecture. So you see glass, you see metal, you see stone to, to kind of reflect that, and some forms that are, you know, that are emblematic of, of that architecture as well. So finally, so this, you have a zoning document that's before you. The elevations that you just saw are all included in there because that's part of the zoning requirements, obviously. We did realize one thing, and I, I pointed it out, talked to staff, on what we call Block C, we would like to propose an amendment because we realized that we don't want to get to a point where there's any interpretation of building code later about number of floors. And we have a mezzanine level in one of our units, so we've said, let's just go ahead and eliminate that and just say that on Block C it would be five stories or eighty feet so that there's not a question about whether a mezzanine is a, makes that a five-story building. That's, that's, that's new, but I just want to make sure we're checking all boxes here. So that's, that's what we have and would request your consideration of that as a formal amendment in your first read this evening. With that, that concludes my presentation.
Counsel, if I may, first of all, I want to thank Parrish and Reese for, for their work on this and, and, and thank them for their flexibility. As Parrish said, when we started this project, we didn't envision the kind of development that was going to be happening further down, and I'm just grateful for their willingness to work with us. And we've, it's easy for people to do renderings and pictures and things, but I can't tell you the level of work that is already behind all of this, between civil engineers coordinating, architects coordinating, a lot of work. These are not just pretty pictures that we hope will look like this. It gets down to the level of detail that is, is already quite impressive in my view. And so I want to thank them for that. And creating a space that's inviting, that's, that's open, that, that is friendly for pedestrians and, and folks to, the, people want to be there, and also creating a space that when there's ten thousand people in the area for an event, for them to be able to get in and get out, even though some few times a year, you want to kind of have a, a design that can meet either one of those needs. And so when we talk about streetscape and parking and all of those things with traffic, you know, it, it takes some creativity, and I really do appreciate the work that Parrish and Reese and the team have done here. And also want to thank Tom and Charles Leest as well on our staff, you know, coordinating all this, bringing it together. A lot of work went into this, so I don't want you to think these are just pretty pictures that we hope will look like this. It is to a level of detail already that's, that's impressive, and I think you can, you can rest assured that this is about as close as you can get in terms of what it's going to look like. So we thank them for their time and work on this. And again, it hadn't been easy, and, and, you know, they have to balance creating marketable space because they're in it, obviously, as developers to, to create leasable space and balancing all those things. And so I just want to thank them, and hopefully what you've seen from both the Riverwalk and, and from the Riverfront Development Team today, you see the level of work and coordination that has gone into, from all sides. So I want to thank them, and thank you, Counsel, for the time today, and be glad to answer any questions you all might have.
I just have a couple of quick comments. Parrish, great presentation, and Paul, appreciate it. I like how you framed the challenges of this deal and how the whole project has evolved with the pandemic. You know, we started this, what, twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen, somewhere, twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, somewhere in there. Got the pandemic, got Baylor's investment kind of in the pavilion, kind of pandemic-negative, pavilion-positive. The needs of this thing where we kind of had to pivot into a parking need and, and moving some of the plant around, your flexibility there has been great. And I like how you described it as unique, whereas six years ago when we started this thing, the uniqueness was kind of a build-it-and-they-will-come deal. You know, Parrish helped us put something here that will be nice. And now we've got a pavilion there, we've got this brand-new Riverfront going in there and just bustling downtown. And I think the, the changes that you've made really fit the progress that we've seen in the last six years, and I think this is a, a great-looking project. I'm, I'm pleased to see, and I know initially we weren't talking about, talking about this, the brick elements were all very important to us, and I see that those are coming through on, on all these, the Riverfront side here, so I'm, I'm pleased about that. One question I did have, I liked the Gantt chart in the other presentation, but what, or what kind of timing are we talking about here? Maybe talk about the, the, the restaurants separate from the
Sure.
The, the mixed, mixed-use stuff.
Yeah, so we're still on target to start the garage in January. We'll be starting the mixed-use building in that same timeframe. Takes, it take, you know, the intention is for that to be open when the pavilion opens. The restaurants will be starting that before next summer is, is kind of where things are slated right now. Those don't take as long to build. So we, one thing that, in looking, looking at the Gantt chart that you all had, what's of particular interest to us as well is that core and FEMA approval process because we are building in that zone as well, so we're kind of tied at the hip on that. So we're, we're hopeful that that approval can come through more quickly, too. Now, I think the way it's been described to me is you all are the purveyors of the permitting for that, so, you know, you know, we'll have to have more conversations about the details on that. But no, our intention is to have everything open when the pavilion opens and, you know, in that timeframe.
Great. Thanks, Parrish.
I think this is really beautiful. I particularly appreciate the wide sidewalks and the way that this will facilitate being outdoor dining. I love all of the landscaping and the shade. That's really beautiful. My only concern is we've been having all these larger design conversations in our neighborhoods to make sure that new homes match the character of our existing homes. And I think Waco has such beautiful historic buildings that have lots of brickwork, like Holmes was saying, lots of arches and soft lines, and this, while stunning, it feels a lot more modern. It feels like a little bit more like a Fort Worth or a Dallas aesthetic than screams a Waco aesthetic to me. So I'm curious, I know that this is, we're so far down in the process, but I wonder if we might be able to send some photos of buildings that we really love around downtown Waco and see if we could incorporate some of those more distinctly Waco vibes into particularly some of the restaurants, some of the, the first half of the presentation.
Yeah, I'd be happy to look at your, your photos and such. You know, what's interesting about the, about that concept, because we've been thinking about that as well, is you've got buildings that kind of create a rectangular form in downtown, and, and there's the volume of what's inside of it. And then it's how it's articulated on the outside. So, you know, in the eighteen nineties and nineteen twenties, they would have strong cornices and then have a lot of articulation on their, around the windows, they would kind of do the same thing. And, and then sometimes in today's world, you'll see people that don't put any detail whatsoever. So there won't be things like, like I showed you in the tile work, or they won't have cornice lines like I was showing you. They won't have indentations in the building facade to create shadow lines. So some of those elements are one of the ways that we're looking at, and also the retail storefront is not just a straight aluminum storefront.
Right.
Some of those things were how we were trying to, you kind of encapsulate what you have in downtown, but also be cognizant that you have the pavilion across the street, which is very modern.
Yeah, yeah.
In a way that doesn't look weird, you know? So it, it's congruent, and it transitions from historic downtown to the pavilion in a way that you can see that visual transition. That's what we were trying. So when you add the arch, it was a direct relation
I love it.
Back to what you have here. And, you know, what we don't have right now is the, the level of detailed drawings that, of, of how is that arch clad? The, the chandelier that's on the inside of that space that's hanging down. So we're, we're with you. We want to make sure we've got a lot of detail on the building so that it doesn't feel flat.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, the flat is the stuff that makes, that feels real contemporary
Yeah.
When it, when it's not articulated.
Yeah, I think with, that's helpful to hear. Perhaps as the detail is drawn out further, I would love to just see more of those, those soft lines, the, the detail work above windows that I think are so stunning in old Waco buildings downtown. I understand that y'all are braiding together an incredibly, an challenging number of elements in this wide swath of land. And I'm so excited about this, but really, I just, I'm so defensive, I guess, of of our downtown. I want to protect that feeling and make sure that we are continuing to have neighborhoods and commercial areas that look reflective of who we are.
Team, thank you so much. I, I really, I, I think what you're hearing from our counsel is just this deep desire, as, as Counselor Palmer just said, is to really protect and uplift the Waco aesthetic. And so if And so if, I, I would say if any council members have ideas that they want to send to Reese and Parrish, we can get those to City Manager Ford and, and, and channel those over to him. But I, I agree that this is going to be a stunning project and I know that you, you all have worked hard. And I also am really excited to see this continue to progress and, 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 and be done in a way that is going to be reflective of this Waco aesthetic that we care so deeply about. One question I had was the encore, I don't know Bradley, if that is, is there anything on the subject of any of this work that is timely for this in terms of their future projections? Well, it's about the screening of the, that space in the future, but the timing of, of lines crossing the river, is that, is there any relevance in the discussion of, of that?
I think there is within the overall project. And matter of fact, we've had some recent discussions with them and, and some, some budgetary impact kinds of decisions that often have to be made. So we'll bring a separate report back and talk to you specifically about those.
That's great. Both in terms of the, I don't, you call it a power station? I don't know what that is on the.
Substation.
Okay. Both in the screening or aesthetic of that, as well as the timeline, as there is so much development happening here, if this is a moment where we need to do something, I just think it's, it's, could be relevant for us to, I, I don't want to get far down the road on construction and be like, ah, well, we're too far down the road on construction. We should have done that six months ago or a year ago.
Let's, let's put together a presentation for you, not only to talk about utilities, but also the, the work that's being done in, in the Parkway and Streetscape, both on University Parks and Clay, to give you an overall sense from, those are projects that cities designing and that we're working on. We can combine that together in a presentation for you.
Assistant Manager Paul, can I throw in a suggestion here, Mayor? You know, there are a lot of pictures of downtown way before the tornado knocked down half of our buildings. I don't know if during our presentations are, if we couldn't find some pictures of downtown and, and bring them forward and see if we really want this area to look like that. If I remember correctly, walking downtown as a young girl, I wasn't impressed with some of the buildings there. So. You know, bring those pictures forward and, and see what we can, what we can look at and see what we think about a lot of our new stuff coming up and looking like that.
Sure.
I don't know, I don't remember anything pretty other than Cox's.
Come on.
Anyway, just live by us there. But I think we can dig up some pictures somewhere and bring those forward.
Yes, ma'am.
Is it, from a historic preservation perspective, I think the, the, the aesthetical theory is where we are aligning with the arches, with the, those are the things that you want to keep true and germane to, the continuity of extending from downtown. I mean, I don't know, it's a, it's, it's, that's why you're the designer because it, it is a very delicate balance to make sure we don't look like yesterday and today. And so we're gonna, the good thing is that the Texas collection is right here in Waco. So there is not a photo of Waco since its inception that you can't find and be able to, to add those touches. So I think that both, both requests of our council members can be attained and are being attained in, in how we go. I think that we can surmise and say, with, with, with the mayor's finishing comments, that this is amazing opportunity. My question as far as infrastructure goes, as we approach what, watch, I'm going to get beat up for this, as we approach with what broadband looks like in our downtown area, is that included in those utilities and infrastructural conversations?
Yeah.
Awesome. Because I, I know we have an amazing opportunity right now with, with our, our federal dollars that are coming down, place to really impact broadband in our, especially in our downtown areas, but throughout our city. And I would hope that, you know, this being such a catalyst project, see what I did right there? That was a Dale joke. That that would be a prime opportunity to do so.
Agreed.
And, and, and the other sustainability projects that we're working with, with our parking garages. And I would assume that some of these things may have rooftop solar and, and those kinds of businesses that will advance our sustainability platform.
I think you'll see, we, we've talked about parking garage design and providing for the future in terms of charging space and conduits to accommodate that space. So all of that is, is being part not only of, of the catalyst plans, but as far as the city's garages as well.
Thank you. Hey, you guys.
Thank you.
I think Nick needs his own theme music as he approaches with this.
Really?
It'll change every week.
Oh, God.
Very bad, I didn't bring mine.
That's why we brought the big bag.
Shoot, that's not, I'm so curious, oh, wow.
I don't know if y'all heard, the three-minute timer went off a minute ago?
Sure.
I was buzzing the mayor. Sorry about that, Mayor.
Did it work?
No. We know where the power lies. Well, thank you all, counsel, for the opportunity to speak today. Not much is more important than the budget and how that signals where we're headed as a community and signals what's important to us as a community. So I'm very proud to be presenting the manager's proposed budget today. Of course, I'm joined by Nick Sarpy, our Director of Finance, and Paul Kane, our Assistant City Manager. Both these gentlemen have worked quite a bit on the 1,400-plus-page document that you received on Friday evening and also have teams under them that also worked on that document. So I'm very grateful for what you have here today, which I think is a, a, a budget that really sends a signal that Waco is on the rise and is on the move and is really working to deliver on your objectives. So I'm going to give some opening commentary, talk about the budget from a high level, then turn it over to Nick for a deeper dive, and finally let Paul close us, or get close to closing us out on enterprise funds and utility rates, and then Nick will cover the calendar at the end. We'll see how quickly these guys can work through their slides because I think we're running a few minutes behind. Wanted to start with talking about, a little bit about where we've been. This is no shock to any of us, but we've, here with 9% inflation overall, year over year. But within many of our departmental groups and operations, we've seen much higher inflationary pressure, both on important chemicals and materials that we use, upwards of 25 to 170% in some of those line items that we use a lot of, like chlorine, asphalt, concrete, PVC pipe, all seeing dramatic increases in pricing. And of course, our cost of construction projects, depending on what variety of project that might be, between 15 and 30%. And those have been affecting us significantly this year. Fortunately, we've seen significant salary savings this year that have helped to offset those inflationary impacts on the budget, meaning we've had vacancies in our departments and that provides some buffer. The other thing that's provided a significant buffer is a very robust business climate that's shown sales tax increases beyond, you know, percent year over year, beyond anything we've ever seen. So very strong revenue. The other thing that's been happening that I'll go into detail in a few minutes on is we've, you know, oftentimes, city managers wait and, wait for the budget documents submitted to address any pay issues or, you know, gaps in staffing levels. This year has been different. We've had to act differently because we've had unique pressures. And so I'll document some of that to you here in a moment as I talk about our, the important work that our staff is doing. And that includes a large amount of economic development, which you just saw, record levels, obviously, record level capital improvement program as well. As you might imagine, that creates a high project load and that stresses, creates various stress points in the organization. And I wouldn't be doing my job if I didn't say that we're, we're running at a very high speed, all focused on delivering a high level of service, but also a high quantity of projects. Wanted to highlight a few kind of 60,000-foot views of the proposed manager's budget. First off, you know, the, I can't give enough credit to the council for making the moves on the exemptions earlier this year, which provided significant tax relief to homeowners, particularly for those, as I'll show you in a minute, for those that are over 65 and/or disabled. The move y'all made earlier in the year provided immediate relief. When you could have waited for the budget process and that, and that would have provided relief in 16 months, instead you've provided relief that'll go into effect as early as January of 2023. Additionally, the proposed tax rate, property tax rate for the city will be the lowest rate since 2007, proposing a quarter cent reduction in that. Also proposing the largest capital improvement program on an annual basis ever that our city's seen at $215 million. For our staff, proposing a 6% general salary increase, as well as some new and expanded benefits that I'll document here in a moment. I am proposing to add quite a few positions. If you'll remember, our, our head count is more than 1,700 strong, adding 67 full-time positions and four part-time positions, including 10 new police officers and two sergeants for a squad, a power shift concept that, that Chief Victorian is advocating, as well as four new firefighters. In terms of what happens to the average homeowner as they look at their tax bill, as well as their water, wastewater bills, I, I think it's important, and as we've communicated out to the public already, it's important to keep in mind how our fees and taxes are going to impact the average homeowner. And it's dramatically lower than inflation for the average homeowner, about a 3.1% increase when you factor in their water bill, wastewater bill, solid waste bill, and property tax bill year over year, so about 3.1%. I wish I could tell my electric company to do the same thing or any of the other service, I mean, bacon was up 20% year over year, Josh, you know this. So I'm proud of our.
Indeed.
I'm proud of our staff to really work to, to keep us at an overall average impact of 3%. Structurally, we're still in good shape in terms of revenue diversification. I'm going to mention something at the end of my talk that I think will further that. And the, the concept of revenue diversification is very important because we recognize prior actions by the state legislature have put limit, limits on our revenue growth on the property tax side of the equation. And so diversification amongst various fees and non-property tax revenue streams continues to be something that is on my mind, and I'll share a, a new concept for that in a moment, as well as I'll share information about creative approaches to small business support and housing needs. Here, this was a piece that we used in our, our marketing of materials when I proposed the Budget Friday that talks about that projected 3.09% increase for the average homeowner in Waco. And again, all, all I really wanted to communicate here is that had we just gone with a 9% increase, if we just took the inflation rate and applied it to last year's bill, you know, we would have been about $170 more total per average household. And we're significantly, for the average household, under, under inflation, which shows, I feel like, a, a good amount of control occurring within our departments and within our budget structure. In terms of the exemptions that, that the council provided, I, I did want to kind of take a victory lap, really, and give y'all some additional credit, but also talk about, you know, the real impact in terms of revenue loss that we saw. What you're seeing on the slide here is the, the exemptions by year that are provided to homeowners over the last six years, with our new number being in the large bar on the right. The blue is to homestead households, the red is to over 65 homeowners, and the light shade of teal, it looks like, is to disabled homeowners. All told, well over a billion dollars' worth of exemptions, which is a, an increase of more than $760 million of exemptions year over year. The impact of that is that the city, through our work, is going to leave $5.8 million in homeowners' checking accounts as opposed to receiving that revenue. And that's the equivalent of about a four-and-a-half-cent tax reduction. So very significant move. And as I mentioned earlier, the timing of that was very significant because I know it was important to y'all that that be effective very quickly, and that's why we had the emergency readings on that item. So we weren't waiting 16 or 18 months for that impact to hit people. It could happen much sooner.
What was that tax relief impact again?
It's approximately 4.5 cents. Yeah, it's significant. What I wanted to do is show you a couple of examples. These are real homes in Waco, by the way. Wanted to show you how that plays out, the exemption approach that, that the council took. On the top is a home that's appraised at around $100,000. It's a smaller home built in 1910, 830,000 square feet. And then we'll get progressively larger as you work down the chart. But the columns represented here are, the first column is taxed as a, a homestead, the second is if you're over 65, and the third column is if you're a disabled homestead. The, the structure that we use for these exemptions is really providing a lot of value where it's needed most. And I think that's trademarked by the Salvation Army, so I apologize, Salvation Army. And it helped where it's needed most, I think. But you'll see that that $100,000 homeowner, particularly if they're over 65 or disabled homeowner, they're going to see a reduction in their tax bill at 55 to 58%, depending on their characteristics. That's a really impactful move that I think that we haven't necessarily told the story as much about. And there's a lot of homeowners that, particularly in that over 65 column, that are going to see substantial reductions in their, in their tax bills as we, as they open them up here in the next six or eight months, however long it is. Again, on property tax rate, I mentioned it's the lowest since 2007. This is just the second downward move that we've made in about 10 years. Last year, of course, we made about a 3/4 cent move down, and this year proposing a 1/4th or a quarter cent move down. And wanted to kind of compare that to some of the, not that I'm proposing we stop doing any of these things on the chart, but just give you some context. You know, the outside agency contracts are effectively 3 cents on our tax rate. That's what it takes to pay all those. The zoo subsidy is about a penny and a half on the tax rate. We defer more than 5 cents of revenue by our participation in the tax increment financing districts. You kind of see how comparable equivalents are and how they interact with the tax rate. On our CIP, a couple of things, and the team will highlight this in greater detail in a minute, but I wanted to provide the, the overarching view of, from where we've come from in, you know, 2019, 2020, we had about $76 million of CIP funding. We've grown that at this point. In the upcoming year, we're proposing at 215 million. A considerable chunk of that, though, is wrapped up in the pavilion project. The 19 and a half million dollars for the pavilion garage, as well as the presentation you just saw on the Riverwalk improvements, I believe those are funded at $27 million. So we'll have a pullback, I anticipate, in the next budget year. But continuing the trend that, following your lead in terms of investing in our infrastructure replacement program, and you're seeing that way out pretty heavily in our utilities groups as we think about improvements to the sewer. as we think about improvements to the sewer system and water system. We're continuing with the Better Streets Waco program. We've layered on significant bridge improvement dollars this year as well, and we've seen a big increase in the level of support for parks and recreation. As Councilmember Palmer mentioned, that is one of the most likely places that impact everybody in our community, other than perhaps the library. Meeting in the park, you can see all types of different people, and as Jonathan likes to say, it starts in parks, and that's kind of where our CIP budget started this year. And I suspect that we'll continue to move in that direction, or at least continue a, a broad level of support for CIP in parks for the next two to four years. So let's talk about recruiting and retaining the best, because nothing that I ever mentioned from the dais over there, or take credit for in some way, could ever happen without the people that work with us. Our staff is of critical importance. They do amazing, they have millions, literally millions of interactions every year with our residents, and they do it with such excellence. I mentioned that this year was a little unique on staffing, in that we had to have a lot, we, we spent a lot of time and energy modifying people's pay and titles throughout the year. And that's not my preferred approach, because I like to use the budget process to do that, but unfortunately, market conditions did not allow us to take that approach. There's a very high level of competition for qualified staff, as y'all know, within government, but also outside of government, and so it did require us to move and make modifications for approximately 320 employees throughout the year. And when I say make modifications, that means raising their level of pay, raising a certification pay, or some piece of their overall compensation strategy. Proposed, I mentioned earlier, the general salary increase is 6%, effective October 1st. The reality is, that's not quite as much as inflation. Y'all, y'all heard my note earlier, 9%, and so that, that did not quite get to the level inflation, which means that folks on the lower end of our earnings scale probably are losing buying power. In terms of the average full-time employee wage, we're at $68,000, a little over. Our median is getting close to 60,000, and you'll see our lowest full-time employee wage effective on October 1st will be $33,000, which is about $15.90 an hour. And that's just a straight move off of our 15% times, or $15 an hour times 6%. With us being slightly lower than inflation, I, I did think it was important to add a few new, or modify a few benefits. So you see us moving in, back into an educational assistance program. This is a, a program that we had a number of years ago, probably Councilmember Rodriguez probably remembers this, that we, we turned off for a few years. And so we're bringing that back to where an employee can qualify for up to $5,000 a year in assistance to get a GED, for, they can get a college degree, they can get an associate's degree, and up to $5,000. Of course, have to have a passing grade and be reimbursed at the end of each semester. So appreciate our human resources department for bringing that new, or kind of regenerated benefit back to our arrow in our quiver. Additionally, we saw a broad level of support for a paid parental leave program at a recent budget and audit meeting from the council's standpoint. And so that is part of a benefit that will be present on October 1st. We anticipate between 30 and 50 employees will take advantage of that, if, if prior years look the same as future years. So it won't be something that a whole lot of people get to take advantage of, but will be very important to those that have it. And so excited that, for the council's leadership there. Additionally, we're bringing some revisions to our longevity pay program. Human Resources has done a great job with any new employee, following up with them on a regular basis at 30, 60, 90 days, and saying, how's your experience with the city of Waco going? For new employees, they call them and talk to them. And one of the things that they're seeing is that the one-year mark, you know, there's, there's opportunities for that employee to take on other roles outside the organization. And so Missy and the human resources team have done work to bring revisions into the longevity program and make them available earlier in an employee's career, instead of waiting three to five years for that benefit, moving that up in time, as well as increasing the level of benefit to each employee, to ensure that we can, we can retain our talented workforce. And then finally, the last bullet on that slide is always an important one to staff. When we bring a, a general salary increase, staff's always excited, but when we also bring it with a, you know, increased cost to access the health plan, it's kind of a Debbie Downer moment, if you know what I mean. But for the third year in a row, we've been able to not increase the employee cost to access the health plan, and that's really remarkable. That's not something we'll be able to do forever. There's pressure there, but fortunately, we do that in partnership with our employees. They're making wise choices about how they access the health plan. They make wise choices about how they have wellness characteristics, and for the, for at least the third year in a row, we're able to keep their costs level. On the other side of that equation, the city has an increased cost. I don't want to hide the ball here in any way. We are taking on those increases on the employer's side of, of that equation.
Bradley, real quick, in terms of the, this is just an incredible slide and really encouraging, especially the average full-time employee wage and the median, I think still some good work for us to do at the bottom end of that. Really excited about these new and modified benefits. Where will, where or when will we hear more about the details of what these look like, particularly the paid parental leave policies, since not all are created equal when it comes to paid parental leave policies?
Sure, that's absolutely true. Let me take a scan in the audience and see if Missy's here. Okay. When I turn the mic over to, to my other team members, I'll come back on at the end and give you some particulars.
Great. Well, that, is that something that has to be pushed through with a resolution or ordinance, or that's just an HR policy that?
It's part of the base budget proposal, so as you, you know, make, unless there wasn't consensus from the council, but I feel like there's great consensus, it'll be in the base budget proposal that you see.
I think what you witnessed in other cities was perhaps not a unified council on that, and so it had to be brought forth in the manner, manner of a resolution. But I know that that was something that in, in our preliminary budget conversation, you know, we brought up and determined it was a viable option and, and benefit for our employees and something that would increase retention and recruitment especially, because as folks are retiring and you are, there she is.
She is.
Someone, who said my name? And, but I mean, I think that that, that's why this, this can come forth this way, which is, is phenomenal. And, and I'm going to echo Councilmember Palmer's accolades in, in the way this looks and what this means for our employees.
So paid parental leave.
Yeah.
So we already have a draft policy. It's six weeks paid leave, and it's combination, so it's a spouse, if we have spouses, they can use the combined six weeks between the two of them. I'm sorry, I'm out of breath. I was watching it. I was watching the meeting in my office.
Other questions for Missy on that group of, in particular, the modified benefits?
The education assistance, so in upskilling, I know it could be classes, could it also be certifications?
And it could be vocational in nature, too. And we still are working to have a meeting with our local community college to talk about any partnership opportunities, but we do already have a draft policy. The policies won't go into effect until 10/1, so we're still working through all the details. But yes, it would be any type of futureing your, you know, furthering your education.
Would we be able to, is it, we can see those in, in, you know, as far as the working documents of, of what those look like?
Yeah, I'd be glad to provide any level of detail on, I mean, on all three of these. Yeah, sure. The, the other thing that Missy just reminded me, it can be vocational training on educational assistance, I believe it also can be English to second language, is that right?
Yes.
So we're, we're trying to bring that into, into the organization as well.
Cool. Once those documents are ready, or if we could see them in the draft form, that would be excellent. I would love to just get into the full weeds, particularly of the paid parental leave policy.
Thanks, Missy, for running over.
Thank you.
On this next slide, you see the, the list of positions that I am bringing forward in the, in the budget. Again, 69 full-time increase, as well as 27 vehicle additions, and we'll be broken it out by fund as well. I'll sit here for a minute and let y'all digest that, and then I'll move to the next slide. The next few slides will be me talking about each of the strategic goals and various programs that we're bringing forth in the recommended budget under each of your strategic goals.
Are there any new code enforcement officers? Sorry, I'm trying to scan this quickly.
Yeah, I believe we have two. Nick can correct me if I'm wrong.
Yes, the two in Development Services are actually the code. That's where code is now.
Oh, okay.
It's part of Development Services.
And then housing, are there, from the housing study, there's recommendations to beef up our housing department. Are there any added housing staff members?
We have two ARP-funded positions there towards the bottom that I imagine are going to support housing.
Those are the ARPA-funded ones?
We also have some existing moves we're making in the current budget year that I'll be able to detail.
This budget year?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I'll be able to detail those to y'all in the next month or so, the work that Deidre and Galen are taking on to, to move the housing strategic plan forward. As a reminder to the community, here's our strategic goals for the, for the city organization. There's seven of them. The, the first is facilitating economic development. We have a number of initiatives going on, projects and activities, including the strategic plan for economic development that'll close out at the end of this year. We also support a number of economic development organizations in the community to the tune of about $1.1 million, as you think about the, the Three Chambers of Commerce and, and others support economic development organizations. We're, we're a big player in that world, no doubt, as well as having our own team in-house. In terms of the WEMAC contribution, the Waco McLennan County Economic Development Corporation, I am proposing moving that from 3.25 to 3.5 million, a $250,000 increase. I want to highlight, though, that the, the county, McLennan County is recommending a higher increase. They've recommended moving that up to 3.75 million. We, we always stay at the same funding level, so if there is a desire to match the county, that's something I'm going to want to hear at some point from the council and move up to 3.75. But at the, the proposed manager's budget contemplates a $250,000 increase. A reminder on the deferral of, you know, continued property tax revenues into TIF districts, and a, and a good point that I wanted to make, you know, TIF 1 has always been a, a large deferral that we're making and investing that into projects. TIF 4, though, which, you know, we had contemplated perhaps would take two to three years to really get momentum, actually has some money there. So I'll, I'll detail some of that here in a moment about how we're going to access TIF 4 sooner than I anticipated. And then additionally, I always like to highlight that we do have general fund subsidies that support economic development as well through, through some of our tourist attractions. You know, that's part of the economic development puzzle, is having a place where people want to come work and open their businesses. So things like the Zoo or Texas Ranger Hall of Fame, I like to remind the council, we are spending about a, a little under $2 million supporting those organizations from the general fund every year. In terms of new programming, we are going to do more for small business than we've ever done before in the upcoming budget. I'll talk in detail about that in a few minutes, but it does include $3.5 million of small business support, both through the American Rescue Plan, as well as through TIF Number One and TIF Number Four, work that would include new facade improvement grants, as well as small business grants within the core of Waco. The second new funding item that you've, you've heard some degree about already is the 19.5 million that'll be needed for the Riverfront Pavilion Parking Garage, that'll be paid out of the tax increment financing zone number one. And as I mentioned earlier, 1.25 million for new facade improvement programs along Elm Avenue, 25th, 26th Street, and LaSalle Avenue as well. Those are paid for out of TIF resources. In terms of creating a culture of equity and inclusion, this has been certainly work that we've been exciting to do, and Deidre Emerson, our deputy city manager, has been excited to lead. I'll focus on the new funding opportunities, because they're exciting. First line item there is, we are contemplating one-time funding for the design and construction of the new STEAM Education Center in East Waco, using the American Rescue Plan dollars at 6.25 million. That's an exciting project that I think has components for workforce development. Edu, how do you say it, Andrea?
Edutainment.
Edutainment, as well as speaks to the opportunities that we can create for long-term generational wealth in our community. Obviously, we have other partners that are coming alongside us, both in terms of SpaceX and Baylor University on that project as well. I'm also including $425,000 to, to move the ball forward on renovations of both Eastern Little League, as well as the ballfields that are at Cotton Palace Park. Both of those fields have seen better days.
I think so.
Is that the way to say it? And need some support, and so that'll be a one-time funding. I, I think there'll be more dollars needed down the road as well, as we envision further improvements. I'm also pleased to be recommending the addition of a children's librarian at the East Waco Library Branch. You know, often, it's kind of a chicken or egg kind of conversation. If you look at numbers across library branches, East Waco's are lower for children. Well, we're not providing necessarily as many services or opportunities as well, so this will help us get out there and create more opportunities for the children of East Waco, as well as North Waco, to access high-level service opportunity at the East Waco Library Branch, so I'm excited about that. Also excited, when we talk about equity, we don't always think about people with disabilities. We think of other equity issues or items or opportunities, and so excited to be creating a new position that will ensure our compliance with the Americans with Disability Act. That's something that, that we need and will sit within our human resources department, and excited to be bringing that forward. And finally, I've talked about the exemptions for disabled homeowners. That's going to hit right in people's pocketbooks in a really meaningful way, and, and certainly supports our culture of equity for all of Waco.
We will never get through this process if people don't, I mean, if we speak, so I'm just going to shut up. But know that it, I was doing a happy dance when I read that.
Okay. Well, good.
I was like, we will never.
Happy dances all around. We love bringing good news to you. On performing, building a high-performing government, I mentioned some of the modifications we made mid-year. I'm highlighting a few of those job titles that we really worked hard on. Certainly, police dispatch was an issue earlier in the year in terms of keeping our dispatchers and filling those roles. We've also seen a lot of pressure on jobs that require CDLs, commercial driver's license, and we had to do some really significant work to bring our CDL team members into market comparisons. And finally, we're still working through changes for the zoo and animal service staff to bring them into what we would consider market. In terms of one-time or new funding opportunities for this particular goal, we are adding a $85,000 for a development process improvement study. That is going to be somewhat of a customer satisfaction kind of review, bring in a third party that can talk to our customers, who I think will identify strategic opportunities for us to do, do a better job. I think we're, I think we're good, I think we want to go to great, and to do that, we're going to, we're going to bring in a third party to help us identify those opportunities.
Cross-departmentally, or?
It is, yeah. It'll, it'll cover certainly public works and development and plan review process and building, and who, who am I missing? Code? To some degree, yeah, definitely to some degree. And so it'll be an interdisciplinary review that I know our staff will take the opportunity to listen to an expert and learn from opportunities to serve our community better. On infrastructure, I've highlighted a few of these, so I won't dive On infrastructure, I've highlighted a few of these, so I won't dive deep into these, but we are working our way through a more than $2 billion backlog of old streets, sidewalks, and drainage issues. That's still the case. The fortunate thing is this budget provides us the resources to attack those issues. And you're seeing that in our street rehabilitation and preservation program, certainly. I mentioned the bridge reconstruction effort, you know, $5.2 million, a line item that previously hadn't had any dollars associated. Last year was one of the first years where we put dollars into bridge reconstruction, so excited to bring that up to five. We're also budgeting 10.5 for a new solid waste transfer facility and multiple improvements within the water and wastewater system, including, you know, that 72-inch, which is taller than me. Raw intake to the DAF plant. That's a really important one, you know? Josh couldn't walk through it, but I could.
That photo.
You want to go through it? But, you know, that creates a redundant connection to the DAF plant that if we don't have it and it becomes an issue, we're all going to notice it. But having a redundant connection there is going to be very strategic.
Bradley, I know at one point in time, I was upset about Dutton Avenue not being finished. Well, I drove down Dutton Avenue, town to 11th Street, beautiful job. I want to thank staff for getting on it and finally, after almost two years, we finished the work, but it's worth the wait and it's a nice street with sidewalks, so thank you. Thank you for that.
Appreciate that.
And we criticize staff. We come back, we need to praise them when they do something for us.
That's right.
So thanks, staff and the street department for, and the people that ran that construction area. Thank you.
We'll be sure they hear those comments, Alice. Thank you for that.
I'm laughing.
It definitely is a big difference driving down Dutton.
It is. So I was laughing because I was talking to one of the executives of the Dr. Preffler Museum, talking about 5th Street in the same manner, and I said, you know, I'm a Disney mom and when my kids were little, they watched Cars all the time, and so I was like, look at this road Lightning McQueen built. And so that's the way I feel about all of the new streets.
Well, now we have two entrances to South WECO instead of just one.
There you go. There you go. There you go.
Definitely been a challenge, but definitely appreciate the positivity that you bring about when you notice a good change as well. In terms of providing a safe and resilient city, we've had a great year, honestly, with the new fire trucks put into service, 22 new vehicles for police, all hybrids, moving in the right direction there as well. And we expect next year to be similarly a strong year for new positions and new projects in this goal area, including $4.6 million for the new fire station in West WECO on Ritchie Road. That's a project that we're designing now and moving into construction in next year's budget. If you didn't read the WECO Tribune article from a couple of weeks ago, our fire chief gave a good explanation of why that's needed for the fast-growing West WECO region. Additionally, we're putting money in the upcoming budget, proposing it for the replacement fire station that would move from Spate to LaSalle Avenue. We've recently purchased property on LaSalle for this, or we did a property exchange with Baylor University, is probably more accurately stated, on LaSalle, right next door to the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, and so that will allow us to add a new fire station there. I'm proposing $750,000 for design services, and then we'll follow that up in the following year's budget for construction. And that will put us, from a fire station standpoint, in a really good position in terms of quality in our stations. Proposing three additional fire trucks at a cost of about $2 million, again, moving in the right direction there in terms of bringing down our average age of apparatus and our functionality in our apparatus. It's really critical that when our teams go out on fire calls, that everything works and they feel totally comfortable in those units. So pleased to be supporting chief's request there. I mentioned earlier, police staffing issues, or additions. This was 10 officers and two sergeants to create what's called a power shift. This was an initiative that Chief Victorian brought forward that I think will be well-suited to deal with longer call times than I feel comfortable with, response times that I feel comfortable with, and I know that she certainly feels comfortable with. When our average response time pushes into the nine-minute range for high-priority calls, that's beyond comfortable for me as your manager, so I'm excited to support the additional power shift because the power shift will be placed at the time in which the majority or a larger proportion of our calls for service take place. So it should have a significant impact to our community. And then finally, similar to last year, we're proposing four new firefighter positions, and we'll do the same next year. But is that the only, is that three years total, or do we have to do four? Just three years. So three years, four firefighters a year, so that when we open the Ritchie Road station, we've got our whole team that will move out there. So instead of having a huge expense in that year you open with 12 new firefighters, we're taking that one bite at a time, which also creates value to us in the years before the station opens, who have those firefighters already on our team getting ready to serve the folks out in West WECO.
Thank you for putting in that new fire station on LaSalle. I know it's a need and it's replacing the old fire station on Spate. I was invited to go to eat lunch with the firefighters there at the Spate Station, and it is a bit small, but in the new fire trucks, and if we can just keep piling off the ladders of the fire trucks, we'll be doing good.
Got to get up there.
Keep them off there.
Thank you.
We've got a new safety person that's not going to let you do that anymore.
Piting me off of that thing.
But Councilmember Rodriguez, I am excited because I think that that station on LaSalle is going to really signal a major point of rebirth on that corridor, and similar to how our station investment on 25th, 26th marks a line of the city investing in a corridor in a meaningful way. And so I'm really excited to see what we're able to come up with in terms of complementary architecture to that corridor. I think it's going to be exciting.
I'm excited. Jim, you can't come out there and play on the ladder.
Enhancing quality of life. We do, we have significant projects underway now with Suspension Bridge getting close to finishing up this summer, the kickoff of the new Lake Air Little League complex. Our Trail Master Plan will be done here in the next couple of months, as well as Downtown Plan, and the Cotton Palace Park Master Plan will be done in the fall. And then finally, and very significantly, the council's encouraged us and helped us execute on the acquisition of multiple real estate pieces that will support the development of more than 1,200 mixed-income housing units, and that's going to really impact people's quality of life, particularly those that want to move from being perhaps a renter into a homeownership situation. I think in three to five years, we're going to see real fruit around those acquisitions. In terms of new funding, we are bringing the first phase of the community park near the old Floyd Casey Stadium site, $10 million of funding for that first phase. We'll have a subsequent amount of funding in the second year as well, in '23, '24, for the second phase of development. I'm also bringing additional funding for the redevelopment of Lyons Park. We had about $2 million initially allocated, bringing 3.5 additional million dollars into that project. Same is true for the first phase, the China Spring Park, additional funding there that's going to be necessary, and the 27.4 from the TIF to support the Riverwalk improvements you just saw is in the budget as well. And then finally, in terms of implementing the strategic housing plan for WECO, I'm going to show you a chart here in a moment of the changes I'm proposing to the American Rescue Plan allocation. It does include additional money for housing and as well as I'm proposing approaching both TIF boards for additional funding to support affordable housing as well. And finally, supporting sustainability, we presented an informal report in July on this topic, so I won't go super deep here, but I'm real proud of the effort that's been made over this last 18 to 24 months to start really moving the ball forward on supporting resiliency and sustainability. See some of the results on the top. We're going to continue funding the landfill gas project. We've made, of course, the initial changes there to flare the methane, which was the equivalent of removing 19,000 vehicles off the road. So I know we talk a lot about individual transactions on vehicles going to EVs, but that was a transformational move that was the equivalent of moving 19,000 vehicles off the road. Additionally, with our transit fleet, there's a significant amount of federal resources that are going to flow to transit agencies, but you need a transit fleet analysis in order to qualify for EV funding to electrify that fleet, so I am including an allocation to support that analysis. I think that'll bear fruit down the road in terms of competing for federal resources. And then finally, including a one-time study for a solar evaluation study of the old Larina landfill, old Larina Road landfill site, the one that we're currently putting trash on and will eventually close out because it's getting full, could support potentially a solar farm, and I think that would be a neat way to see that site live on and contribute to sustainability. In terms of the ARP changes, the American Rescue Plan changes that I'm proposing to kind of hit your targeted priorities, on the approved column is what the resolution that you've adopted previously, that's what's in place today on how we would use the $34.7 million. The alternate is what I'd like to bring you, you know, in the next six to eight weeks, which contemplates the major changes, are dropping down our contribution to utility generators. Those are the generators needed to run the water plant in the event of a power outage. We're moving that funding into the water fund to cover that, so we're still delivering on the project and dropping, that gives us flexibility by dropping that down to $3 million out of ARP that we're then using to boost for STEAM construction, the STEAM Center, as well as boost our new affordable housing program and down payment assistance as well as small business grant program. We're also accessing, taking our contingency funding down from 2.7 million to zero, and that's how you balance out to get to the contributions that I've mentioned so far. The contingency was going to be needed either for projects that were about to go to bid and feel comfortable being able to support those projects through other funding that might be required.
And we haven't given any account to the infrastructure dollars.
No, not in this. That's right. There's additional dollars that are going to be flowing to our community, particularly for bridges and things of that nature that are not accounted for. That's correct.
Well, even some of the things that are in this budget could be.
Oh, sure.
Paid for by those dollars.
Potentially, yeah. Yeah, obviously takes us, we got to hunt them, we got to hunt, we got to get out there and hunt, for sure.
That's why we have Nick.
That's why we have Nick. We just need a few more Nicks. In terms of that small business support, I'll cover this briefly and, as I've referred to it a couple of times, I think it's important that we increase that ARP allocation from $2 million to $3.55 million in small business support and run a program similar to what we ran during COVID relief in that it's geographically targeted to the core of WECO and provides resources to ensure our businesses can continue to operate in a high inflation market, as well as encourages them to reinvest in themselves. We'll seek support from our local chambers of commerce to help us get the word out about this program and even make contract modifications for the African-American Chamber and the Hispanic Chamber, as well as grassroots WECO, will be making contract modifications to pay them to help us to support this initiative because our housing team can't do that alone. Additionally, I mentioned the facade work. This will come out of TIF 1 and TIF 4. We'll make a request for $1 million from TIF 1 to support the Elm Avenue corridor. This is a corridor that we're putting tens of millions of dollars in public infrastructure work into, and it's been complicated, certainly, and businesses are hanging with us there in terms of operating through construction, but we see an opportunity to support those business and property owners in a unique way so that when we're done with the road work and the drainage work, they could also be done with facade improvements. I'm excited to bring that forward. And similarly, in the commercial corridors within TIF 4, doing an allocation for $250,000 there. And then finally, proposing a new Chapter 380 Economic Development Program, a grant program for businesses that are heavily impacted by construction. Councilmember Rodriguez mentioned Dutton Avenue. There's businesses along Elm, Dutton, and Washington in particular that have not exactly thrived during construction. They've just been trying to survive, and they've seen negative impacts in their sales, and so we're going to open up a grant program to help support them and get them back on their feet. And look forward to providing an informal report to the council on 816 that further documents how that's going to work. But those are new programs that I think will hit at the right time and really support bringing the core of WECO back. Couple of things I need your help on. And first one is the PID Number One Board. I'm going to make a request to them to use their fund balance to support existing and new events along the Brazos River. The PID has a significant fund balance that exists today, and I'd like to access that to bring new things like the Iron Man, new projects, new events downtown onto that corridor because that flows, that creates commerce for our local businesses all over town. I think the PID is well situated to help in that manner. I think it's also well situated to help existing events that are experiencing cost increases, whether that's due to new public safety requirements, due to preparations for mass shootings or similar. There's costs that get borne to events because we need to adequately plan for safety, and so I believe the PID can provide a solution there. We are a big contributor to the PID. We're the authorizer of the PID, if you go back to how it's written, but I'm going to need your help working through that politically, to speak frankly with the PID board and get that to a level of success. I'd also like to encourage the PID board to use their fund balance to enhance streetscape along Austin Avenue and U Parks, particularly the 7th Street Plaza location, 7th and Austin. There's a real opportunity there to make permanent some of the temporary improvements we've made.
My apologies because I was under the impression that that plaza in particular already belonged to the PID as it was a project that was established out of City Center WECO.
It was, yeah, and I think there's an opportunity to signal that very clearly and make permanent.
Sure, sure. I think that, you know, I mean, it has place and space and is a wonderful gathering opportunity for our citizens and downtown users. So, I mean, you know, I think it would fall exactly in line with their purview.
Yeah, good.
City manager, I just want to pause for a second and note that it is 5:30, and I know that we're on Slide 78 of 168 slides, and so I'm not, I'm not trying to.
I'm sorry.
That's how many I have in my presentation, but maybe, oh, that includes public hearings as well, so.
Right. I was like, that's not all you.
All right, for this, 78 of 145 slides. But we don't have to, I'm not trying to, I'm just trying to pause and make sure that we're aligned on. What is the expectation that we'll be able to go through the entire presentation?
I think I'm going to try and get to my closing slide in about four or five slides and then take your feedback. The other things that I wanted to highlight on this slide, awkward moment.
I mean, it is, but it isn't, so we just move forward.
Yeah.
We, we fine, totally fine.
I love my mayor. Other thing I wanted to highlight on this slide is we are, for the first time, going to bring requests to TIF number one and four for affordable housing development. And that will be, I think the TIF boards are well prepared to receive those requests. And I'm excited to see how we can put our strategic land holdings in both those TIF districts to, to use and, and bring resources around this affordable housing issue through those TIFs. I think if we're successful, I could see that being a vehicle that we use.
Causeful.
Yeah, for the long term. Now, let's talk about the, so I need your help on the PID, for sure. And then I need your help contemplating a new street capacity program. And we've done a great job investing in street maintenance with the Better Street Waco Program over the years. That is, though, almost entirely focused on dealing with existing pavement and not dealing with roads that have been impacted by development and capacity constraints. Roads like Richie Road comes to mind, or Chapel, or Flat Rock, or, I have a list in a moment, I'll show you. And so what I'd like to propose and get your feedback on is creating a new street maintenance fee to create debt capacity for new road expansions. Currently, we fund about $5 million a year in street preservation out of general fund cash. We just, right off the top of the budget, $5 million bucks a year. That's what's in your upcoming budget, 4.9, I believe. So the concept would be to create a street maintenance fee, very similar to the drainage fee that we did last year, that produces an equivalent amount of revenue as what you're contributing in, in general fund cash, about $5 million bucks. And we'd transition the street preservation activities, things like chip seals or crack seals. We'd transition those, be paying, paid for out of the general fund cash. Instead, it'd be paid for out of the new street maintenance fee. And that would open up your general fund to service new debt, which then could be dedicated to street expansions. It would, there would be a cost to residents and businesses in that. You know, in my mind, it's, it's probably in the, in the first, you know, year of, of consideration, it's probably around $5 a month to the average household. But it would, it would create about $80 million of capacity over the next 10 years to expand roads, which currently we have no funding plan on how to expand roads on the edge of our city, roads that are impacted by development significantly. Similar to the drainage fee, the, the maintenance fee would be calculated based on the land use's estimated impact on the road system. So if you're, let's say, a 2 million square foot distribution center down in the industrial park, your, your street maintenance fee is going to be pretty high. If you're a transit-dependent homeowner that doesn't have a car, your fee could be as low as zero. So your usage on the roads would dictate your, your, your fee impact. We'd need a study to, to do that, and I'll talk to you about that in a minute, how we would approach the project. But the debt capacity would allow for us to take on one to two roads every year and start chipping away at this issue between 2023 and 2031. Talk about some of the candidates that I, early, early on candidates that I see for this program. It won't surprise, I don't think, anyone that these are on, predominantly on the edges of our community where there's growth and activities occurring, hundreds of new houses being platted and built. So roads like Yankee and Tree Lake and Flat Rock out in China Spring, as well as Richie and Farm Miller and Chapel, Panther Way, Spiegelville out in far west Waco, as well as 12th Street in South Waco, are early candidates that I see of, of being able to be expanded due to this creative solution. So as I take your feedback on this, I did want to explain the next steps, what they would be. We'd hire a third party to come in and recommend best practices, estimate fee generation, and provide you with information on, on the fee schedule, particularly as it relates to the residents and businesses, as well as the low-income and transit-dependent populations. There are several cities that have done this recently, done it very well, actually, in terms of creating opportunities for either transit-dependent or single-car households to have lower fees versus a, a household that has four or five vehicles and has more impact on the street system. So we bring in that consultant and start working through that, similar to what we did the drainage fee about 18 months ago. We'd come up and adopt a project list that's more detailed than the map I just showed you, obviously with cost estimates in the spring of 2023. And with your, with your blessing, would start collecting of the fee in April of 2023, kind of a partial year implementation, which means we could start taking on projects as early as 2024.
Do you want that feedback now or after this meeting?
If it's a yes, I'll take it now.
Well.
No, I'm joking, Josh.
Ready to put a $5 million fee on some people?
Fee for whom?
So it'd be a fee for homeowners and businesses. Yeah, it'd be similar to the drainage fee, so everybody pays a fee based on their usage.
You mean you're going to charge me how many times I get out on the road?
Basically.
Basically, okay. Well, see, I need more information about that.
And, and that's a good, that brings up a good point. And that is that it's my understanding that the city manager's going to extend an invitation to each council member to meet individually with you to go over the budget. Is that correct? So
We have, yeah.
I don't want to, or then maybe that's already occurred. So I don't want council members to feel that, I'm not trying to stifle conversation at all, but I want council members to, to understand there are going to be future opportunities to dialogue with city management and, and an open, future open meetings with each other about any of these issues that we
This is just an introductory statement. This is at the beginning of this dance.
Something to get us to thinking about. And, and certainly more hits that we're going to be getting. Thank you, Bradley. But
It's funny because, you know, some of you get the hits because the roads are, you know, little county roads that are eight-foot lanes. And then others get the hit because the fee exists. And that's why I love this team, because we all have to look at it for the benefit of the whole community. And those, those are complicated decisions, for sure.
I'll just say, I'll just say briefly on the principle of this is that as we see all the new plats generally are coming from outside what I would call the Waco ISD part of Waco, the, the new growth area in China Spring, and, and in my area, it's in Midway ISD, that there are a number of what appear to be county, unco, you know, un-upgraded county roads in desperate need of capacity upgrades. And I know Jim has those, particularly in China Spring, as the map showed. So in terms of long-term, we're, we're bringing and annexing in a lot of subdivisions that just need constant attend, or just need continued attention and, and help from the city.
Yeah, Ken, I hate to stop because I know we're running out of time. But yeah, this is one that's kind of, it needs a lot more detail on how this would work and where it, who gets charged, how much do they get charged? And you see that a lot of these new roads are in my district. But yeah, a little more detail would be good. I'm sure we'll get it.
All right, let me, let me close out with Sorry.
You'll be hearing from us, Bradley.
Hey.
Well, can we set up a meeting to talk about this?
Yeah, now we want to hear feedback on, on the entire, on the entire budget. So looking forward to each of you coming in and doing that. So highlights, certainly, a lot of new programs and services aimed at your priorities. As you go out and talk to homeowners and businesses, you can talk about the service delivery that we provided, as well as a lot of new programs. And for the average ratepayer homeowner, we're doing that well below the rate of inflation. I think that's a, a point of pride to our team, for sure. We're valuing our staff with the 6% GSI and the new improved benefits. We've got good balance in our approach and driving more dollars into capital improvements than ever before. We certainly have the opportunity to consider a, a street maintenance fee. I look forward to getting your feedback and, and talking through that. And lastly, just again, take the victory lap of the impact you are having for homeowners, particularly those that are disabled and over 65. It's very meaningful, that work that you took on earlier this year. So I'll take any questions you have at this point and, or we can adjourn for executive session.
Yeah, I just, I, I want to pause and thank our city staff for putting this together. This is kind of the part of the show where the baton gets passed from city, city management to the council. And this is a phenomenal, cumbersome, challenging process. And Paul, Nick, Bradley, and everyone on your team, and really everyone at the city, because I know that so many people in this city hall play a role in this at some level. I know where we're going with this.
That's the part.
Mayor, what were you saying? Budget baton.
And so I
Thank you, Nick.
I am so I, I'm so appreciative of our city staff. And, and this is really something, the, the things that are in this budget are going to improve the lives of our residents and transform our city for the good. And it's why the six of us come to, to these meetings. It's why we all show up every day, is to make our city better and stronger. And so I just have such high regards for the staff and all of their work to get us to this point. It is very, very hard, challenging, but very, very important, and it's really a good product. And I know that we're going to have a lot of good conversations. This is not the, the last conversation. We have a few more meetings still to talk through this. And I know that council members will be given direct feedback to, to city management as well. I, I do know that we are running kind of short on time, so I want to give council a moment. If, if they want to say anything right now, to, to have the freedom to do that. But otherwise, I, I will adjourn us to executive session. Any final words?
I'll, I'll take a minute. Exactly, the budget is what I'm all about. So we work our, we work our way to this thing.
And just as a reminder to Councilmember Holmes, you'll have plenty of time.
I will, but I just don't like being rushed. This is a very important process. I'm, I'm serious.
It is, it is.
So the, there's parts that, are we going to get a chance to talk publicly about it in another meeting?
Oh, yes.
Oh, yes.
We have two
Rush you, Jim, seriously, take your time.
No, I mean, I know that we, we've got to get out of here. It's quarter till six. We've got other meetings and other items on the agenda. But there's a, a lot going on here. This is a huge budget. And I think it should require all of us to reflect on what we're doing here.
Yep.
And it's, and a, and a couple of items I have that I want to talk about, but
No, seriously, Jim, we don't have to, we don't have to rush.
No, let's, I get it. We, we got to move on. I mean, I could talk for
There's two opportunities, though, to have further discussion. One is next week's budget audit on the night, I believe, as well as the 16th council meeting. We can leave significant time for further discussion as well as we move forward in the budget calendar.
Yeah, I just want to think we're acquiescing to everything you're presenting today because I've got some specific points.
I take, I take, if, if you didn't say something about it, it's approved.
So I was going to give my word in there.
The record show, the record show that was sarcasm. That was definitely sarcasm. So no, I look forward to
I appreciate the work. This looks good.
It, it is a 1,400-page document. And so we, for context for the community members, why the, the council might feel this way is, yeah, there it is, that's right.
To be clear.
And we delivered that on Friday evening, I believe.
Yes.
And so it's not like y'all have had a month with this document.
That's right, yeah.
And, and so don't, if you're watching this online, don't expect that your council members can, can digest that level of information in a couple of days. And so we look forward to the additional opportunities to discuss it.
Tweaks, edits, and conversations.
That's right.
Good.
Your time.
Thank you. We will now recess the work session, reconvene regular session. For executive session is read into the record by the city secretary at 5:46 PM.
Texas Open Meetings Act, 551.1071. Real property, Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.072. Economic development, Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.078. And personnel, Texas Meetings Act, Section 551.074. C.D. Secretary Hicks, and discussion of municipal court judge appointment process and review and discussion of potential candidates for seven municipal court position. We are now in executive session.